All right. Are we ready, Nate?
We're ready.
Okay. All the order, Ms. Robold, where are you today?
Right here.
Hello, over there.
Okay, Mr. Birdnick. Mrs. Brancato. Mrs. Brancato, we're doing roll call.
I'm here, I'm here, I had unmute, hold on there.
Mrs. Crazin.
Here.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mrs. Islandberg.
Here.
Mr. Goddixon.
Present.
Mr. Miller. Mr. Panofsky. Mr. Martin.
Present.
Eight members, eight members in the room, one remote, nine present.
Thank you very much. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards, and we have a moment of silence for the victims of COVID since we are finally here together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Thank you. Announcements. Does anyone have any announcements? At this time? All right, I don't see any, so President. Oh, I can't hear you. Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Okay, I just wanted to recognize this afternoon, we had Mr. Ortiz from McDonald's Elementary School.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Can you pause for a sec? Can everybody hear him?
I can't hear him at all.
No.
The volume on your headset.
Mr. Miller, you were going to talk about the Equity Summit? Yeah, so this afternoon was the PSBA Equity Summit. I can't hear you either.
One second. That's much better. Yeah, I can't hear you that well, Mr. Panofsky. Check the volume.
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Much better.
Oh, okay.
All right, everybody get the volume up.
All right, and then let me finish the. We have a very large task force, Equity Task Force in the district, probably one of the most active and largest in the state. Mr. Ortiz represented the district extremely well, presenting at the Equity Symposium today.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I'm going to remind board members, because I'm getting an echo, and I suspect that's because we're not all muted. So if you're not speaking, it seems that it's going to be really important to be muted. Oh, yes, thank you. Can everybody still hear me? Thank you. And I was reminded, but thank you, Dr. Ben, that I needed to announce that prior to this meeting, by way of an announcement, we did have an executive session to discuss legal and personnel matters. Thank you. All right, any other announcements? All right, and that's seeing none. Can we then have, we have a student presentation from William Tenet High School, Logan Merritts.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Logan Merritts. I'm a senior at William Tenet High School, and I'm here to give the student report for William Tenet. In late September, teachers at Tenet hosted the first virtual back-to-school night by making videos for the parents. Fall sports have also been going well, and the boys soccer team is actually ranked first in the PIA double A league. The middle school and elementary schools have hosted their home and school meetings recently, like Tenet as well. William Tenet has a number of affairs in the upcoming weeks. Student government and class officers will be elected following their recorded online speeches. Honor societies are now accepting applications and will come with decisions soon later. And finally, homecoming king and queen nominees are to be selected, and the student body is still voting on how the ceremony will be shared. Also, the students in student government and athletic council voted about powder puff, and that will be postponed until spring. As of right now. Thank you. That is the student updates for Tenet, and that's it.
Thank you so much, Logan. It's nice to see a student on the screen, so I hope every, yeah, it's wonderful. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, you did a great job.
Thank you.
All right, then we also have Cara McKeo from Middle Bucks Institute of Technology.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Hello, my name is Cara McKeo, and I'm a senior at William Tenet High School. I'm a Level 300 student in the Sports Therapy and Exercise Management Program at Middle Bucks. I believe I can speak for my classmates when I say it is very exciting to be back at Middle Bucks. I am currently participating in hybrid instruction, so I attend Middle Bucks in person two days a week and learn online three days a week, although I would prefer to be in school every day. I would like to give a shout out to the Little Bucks Partners in Learning Staff on being awarded the Keystone Star Force Center, which is the highest level rating for a childcare center. Keystone SARS promotes quality improvement in early learning and development programs and school-age childcare. A Keystone SARS designation tells parents that their children are in a safe, respectful environment in which they are learning new things every day to support their current and future successes in school and in life. The adult evening school program has begun. The fall semester offers limited courses this fall on automotive repair, carpentry, welding, plumbing, HVAC, and automotive technician certificate classes. The adult classes provide instruction in current technologies, opportunities for a new career, update skills, or earn industry certifications. MBIT will host our annual occupational advisory council meeting virtually this year on October 22nd, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. There will be a pre-recorded update from our administrative director prior to each of the committee's meeting using the Zoom platform. The focus of the fall OAC meetings are to review equipment to assure what the teachers are using aligns with current industry standards. MBIT has announced the fall virtual open house scheduled for a virtual open house on November 19th, 2020, starting at 6:00 p.m. The open house will include an information session for prospective students, virtual tours, learning about exciting career paths, meeting our faculty, staff, and also talking to current students about the school. See the date, we love to virtually see you there. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to keep you informed about what is happening here at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology.
Thank you so much, Cara. You did a wonderful job, and again, it's nice to see some student faces.
Cara, how are we going to get our, how are we going to get our virtual pies?
I don't know how they're going to do that this year.
Mr. Miller, we were talking about that at the meeting yesterday about virtual pies, we're working on it.
Well, it's good luck with that. Let me know how it works out. And thank you very much, Cara. And so now we'll move on unless anybody has any other questions for Cara?
Not a question, just a comment. When she mentioned about the Little Bucks four-star rating, they did a presentation at our meeting last night, and of 6,000 early childhood centers, only 15% in the state have that rating, so it's a really prestigious rating. It means that that Little Bucks Center, which is staff partially by our students, is the top. It can't get any better, the education they provide, so that's a huge honor that we were given that rating.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Panofsky. That's wonderful. And thank you again, unless there's any other questions for Cara? Then thank you, Cara, and I think we're now on to our next presentation, which is obviously a key one for this evening. The K-12 School Hybrid Proposal and Parent Survey Results, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our administrative team.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I want to thank you for joining us this evening. As we get situated, Nate, do I, okay, he's bringing it up, I believe. As we get started, we have, joining us this evening is our building-level principals who are representing the various levels. We have with us key central office staff who were part of this process. The plan was a collaborative process that included collaboration with representation from our CEA in conversation and consultation with some of our support staff. Tonight also was a next phase as we've tried to move to getting some sense of normalcy. Earlier this year, as you know, we have had high school sports resume, we've had our middle school sports resume, we have had our special needs students return to school. And of course, tonight is the first time where we've had our board members here present. Everyone in the room is trying to demonstrate our social distancing efforts along with a new format with regards to using the current mic setup. As we get to certain portions of the presentation, I will turn it over to others. I will share with the board and Mr. President that because of the importance and the significance of the conversation around the hybrid proposal, and the fact that it is a much more detailed conversation, I will not be adding into a superintendent's report. What I just did now is my version of the report, because we need all the time we can get to do this, so this is part of the report.
I'm sure the entire board thanks you for your brevity.
And Nate, why, let me see if I can get this going. There we go. Okay. Okay, as you know, I was asked upon comment on board on September 4th to provide a courtesy of conversation with Dr. Seidenberg at Field Day and to give the board an initial report. We did that, I believe, September 22nd, and then this month, as part of the agreed-upon transition process, we were also scheduled to give the board an update in October. So the first part of this is meeting that expectation for the update, so considerations and key foundations. In working to move forward, there were some overarching considerations that we were looking at, and these are inclusive of the Health and Safety Plan that the board approved. The ideas that were promoting behaviors that will help reduce the COVID-19 spread, maintaining healthy environments, healthy operations, being prepared in case someone becomes sick, and how to respond. A key component also was how do we minimize the disruption to the instructional model and create some stability for our students and parents. As you probably have watched, there have been several school districts surrounding us that have had to step back, which we believe helped, creates an unstable environment because of issues with COVID-19. And then recently, an entire state now has shut down schools functioning to step back because of some of the spiking that is going on. So we also wanted to try to bring forward a plan that we could probably sustain and minimize the impact of going back and forth for our parents, as well as the continuation of having flexibility to adjust between the structural models. Currently, we're in virtual. Obviously, the goal is a move towards full open in your Health and Safety Plan. The hybrid blended was mentioned in that plan as the next process for moving forward towards full open. Everything we should be doing is trying to get to that point in a safe and healthy manner. This actually is harder. It would actually be easier for us to actually have students every day in a normal situation, but this is, again, trying to make sure we're keeping people safe. You know, in May, a report in a research study was done, it was released in June. It was requested by Pennsylvania Department of Education and conducted by Atlantic Regional Educational Laboratories, often referred to as RAIL, to provide some analytical support. It was a three-part project, and it examined emerging evidence regarding public health and educational implications about reopening school buildings, creating agent-based model to zest the spread among students and school staff based on the different reopening models. It was funded by the Department of Education, Institute of Educational Sciences. September, that report was updated, and Mathematica extended the previous work. They started simulating the COVID-19 spreads in schools on a range of different scenarios. And significant and important is that they conducted over 400 simulations, trying to predict what would happen, the type of infections of hundreds of combinations for local circumstances, based on the operating procedures that a school moved forward with and using quarantine strategies. Some key findings, this is not new, so I will not read all of these and focus on the ones that really, really jumped out to advising us on our plan. That hybrid approaches where smaller groups of students wearing masks and attending in person part-time dramatically reduce the total number of likely infections in a school. It is important to note that schools are a microcosm of society. While there has been low incidences, believe it or not, I think roughly 130 something, 150, schools end up being impacted by what happens in the community because people come back to school. Infection rates in elementary schools are likely to be lower than in secondary schools, where we have the same operating strategies. And then the other big one was schools using a hybrid approach in a community with a moderate infection, which is what our current rate is, are likely to experience little or no unplanned disruption in a number of days of students, which is what we want. If we start bringing kids back to school, we want to create as stable an environment as possible, so our parents don't have to keep changing. So as we move to the next level, the goal here is to make sure that we try to put a model forward that we can sustain as we keep moving towards, try to move towards full reopening. Key terms, and I won't read that, but people can refer to it. Incident rate per 100,000, and that's there for the public if they want to see it, it's on our website. It's terms that have been used, but you always want to make sure that people are talking the same language. Percent positivity rate and a level of community transmission. It is important to us that people understand the definition, because that is part of what we're using to advise the board on how we make decisions to move forward with, you know, virtual to hybrid blended to full reopen, and that's why we included that information. We suggested last time to the board that we develop guiding metrics so we can communicate to the public of how we would decide to move forward. Full in-person standard would be equal to or less than 5% PCR rate, incident rate less than 10, and then a low community transmission rate. Hybrid would be between 6 and 10%, less than 100, and a moderate or low rating, and in full virtual, greater than 10, greater than 100, and then moderate or substantial. These metrics are subject to change based on information. We are constantly reviewing information from the Pennsylvania Department of Health, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and Bucks County Information, CHOP, and American Pediatrics Association is what I constantly are reviewing and looking at. It is important to note in consultation with the principals that, just an FYI to our parents, that as we move and try to transition between the phases, there could be, depending on the issues, operational and/or staffing, a need for anywhere from 10 to 14-day transition period. Should full virtual be required, say something happened, you know, it will be maintained. We recommend for a minimum of 14 days to get that true data to say we can move out of it and go back to whatever the next phase, back to hybrid blender, full reopen, so that we know that we're actually getting a steady baseline for that it's safe for people to be back in school. We also created this past week, I think, week before last, excuse me, trying to be transparent to the public, a COVID-19 dashboard. The first iteration of that dashboard is what's on the left, where our incident rate, as you can see, was 44.1 to 3.7. It is attempted to be updated weekly by our staff, because we get information on Fridays and Saturdays, so we spend our weekends looking at that information. Nate, who has been done a yeoman's job in a lot that I've thrown at him since coming on board in the team, he created this dashboard based on what we asked to share with our public. You can see that this week, our incident rate has gone down, our PCR rate has gone down, our level of community transmission has remained the same. Because we now have cases in the district to be transparent, we also are now reporting a number of cases so that people feel like they're aware of what's going on in our school. At the bottom is the current state situation. We are obviously doing better than the state. Their numbers are there, I'm not going to read them, they're there for the public to see. It's important to know that we do look at where our staff come from also, and whether there's a large contingent of representation of staff in other counties like Montgomery County. I do look and review with the team to see what's happening there, because again, they come over and work, so we can't do every one of them, but we look for the largest population within our workforce to see what impact we may have. Because also, if they make a decision, which we've lived through, when Montgomery County was shut down, it impacted a number of districts. So we do try to pull data on where our staffing and workforce come from, and what potential impact those issues may have on our school district. The survey, as I said, this was a team approach, so part of this will include conversations with Anthony to come forward, but to lay the foundation, we wanted to make sure that we were clear with definitions of why and what the purpose is of a survey. Our purpose was to assess the thoughts, opinions, and feelings. Our intent is to get feedback from the people we survey, but I want to be clear, our survey is not a tally or vote. So when we report survey information, we can't say that everybody or all people in a certain group want this. It is of those who responded representing that group, that is what we're representing by the survey, and it's about thoughts, opinions, and feelings of that group that we're trying to get. Our hope in reporting is that we give you information on what was the response to the questions, the percent of the respondents, the number of the respondents, and a total number of who responded to the questions. We also have started looking at what we would call completion rate and response rate is what I discussed with the team, is we try to understand how representative is this information of the people that we're trying to understand what's going on with. So we now start looking at completion rate and response rate, which is what we will also, going forward, always report with our surveys. It is important that we consider the validity and reliability of a survey, whether it's a representative sample of that. The instrument that we use provides this as an example of what you could say is a good representative sample of your survey results. Again, it's there for people to see, I'm not going to read it, but it plays into when you see later how we determine whether or not we believe we're getting valid information and whether it's representative of the sample population. And that's examples of plus or minus 3%, 5% or 10%. We typically, as the team, we look at the 5% plus or minus error range. I believe 10% is too big of a swing in the process, so we typically try to look at, do we have a population sample that is representative of plus or minus 5%? And Mr. Gabriel?
Thank you, Dr. Ben. Nate, if you want to go to the first slide. So as Dr. Ben mentioned, a few demographics related to the parent survey that we wanted to review. We have about just over 3,300 families registered in the school district, and 2,029 different families participated and responded. So if you go back to that two slides ago for a 5% margin of error, we needed only 350 to participate. So we are well over the number for validity for the results for the parent survey. So thank you to the parents who did participate in the survey. This was an enormous help for us in terms of our planning. The response rate in that was about 60%, just over 60% response rate, you know, out of the, out of all the families in the district, and we had 100% completion rate. So everybody that started the survey completed the survey. The first question that we asked was, do you plan to send your child back for in-person instruction as outlined above by our proposed hybrid learning schedule? We had just over 77% responses saying yes. So for the, you know, 2,000 and just over 2,000 families, close to 77% were interested in bringing our children back in learning and in the hybrid model. Now, please keep in mind, the hybrid model that we originally proposed with the survey is different than the one that we are proposing tonight. We had an initial draft of a model, it's not drastically different, but after going through the parent feedback through the additional comments, which I'll get to a little bit later, there were some shifts and changes to the model based off those open-ended responses that helped us to craft the model we're putting forward. So go ahead to the next slide. The second question was around having the option of the 100% Virtual Centennial Virtual Learning Academy, which is an asynchronous option, not taught by centennial staff. There was not a very high percentage of parents that were interested in that model. We know that asynchronous works for some folks, but not many, and we especially know that from our experience last spring, where we were highly asynchronous for the majority of the time, and a lot of the feedback that we got from the parents in the community was more live teaching and more face-to-face with our, with our own teachers. So that was some of the, some of the feedback we got to that question. And then the last one was if you had the option to participate in 100% virtual learning taught by our own staff, we had about 40% of our respondents to that question say yes. So, you know, the trends that we've seen, and again, not too different from last spring's feedback, coming into this year was our parents and our students want our centennial teachers, and want an opportunity, if they need to, to learn virtually still at 100% of the time synchronously. So that really played into our decisions with the plan. So before we move on, let me mention, because we didn't include in the slide.
Mr. Gabriel, before you, I just wanted, before you go farther, it was, you flipped it, and I know what you meant, 60% said yes.
Oh, I apologize, yes.
Before we go farther, yes, thank you, okay.
The other thing, the other piece to the survey was, we did have a question that was an open-ended question, and to everyone's credit, we had 921 comments, considerations, or questions, and over 55 pages of open-ended responses. We did not choose to include those results necessarily in this presentation, mostly because in order to aggregate that data, from a time perspective and the numbers, it just, it didn't make sense. What I can tell you is, we did go through the data and through the responses, and I can tell you, the new plan already represents a lot of comments where, you know, focused on asynchronous days being a huge concern. And that was in the original proposal, when the survey went out, well, it's, there's not really going to be that many, if at all, there'll be some asynchronous learning opportunities, but we have in the new plan much more of a presence of synchronous learning opportunities. A timeline to be back was a consistent, common question that came up. That will be presented tonight. Flexibility for parents to flex in and out of coming in hybrid and staying home was a concern that came out in the parent feedback. That got taken into consideration with this plan. The timing of cohorts with blended families that might have different last names was a concern. That got taken into consideration as we put this plan together. And being thoughtful in our implementation and not rushing this was also a common theme that occurred throughout. And to be honest, we also had a lot of people commenting that they just want to be back 100% five days a week. So we did have a good balance of different opinions, but I can tell you right off the bat that there was at least five or six of those needs that we, you know, decided to work into the new plan. In order to be able to get more specific feedback on the new plan, if, you know, if and when it's approved tonight, we will be launching a thought exchange later this week as you get more information, and hopefully we'll get, you know, questions and comments that are more tailored to the actual plan we're hoping to put in place. That'll be open for about a 10-day period, and then we will report that back out, just like we did last spring with the Constantly Learned Survey that will get put back out with the results to the community. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you. All right, so the faculty and staff survey, again, we had about 843 staff members get the survey. Just over half, about 51% participated and responded, and out of the 434 that started, all 434 completed the survey. We had over 92% of our teachers decided to and were open to coming back to teaching in the building for the hybrid learning model, which is a really large percentage of our teachers that are willing and excited to come back and start working with our students. We also had a pretty good number of teachers, I think it's about 86%, that if we had to do some sort of 100% virtual, would they be willing to cover that as well? And once again, the response was, yes, we have a large number of teachers that if that's a need, they would have been willing to do that for the students as well. Go ahead, back it up.
I just have to unmute myself. I have a question, yes, on this. I'm noticing that, can you back it up one slide? Just looking at the raw data, basically, you have 31 people who said, no, they wouldn't be able to return. Now go to the next slide, and the total number of respondents here is 195, which obviously is more than just the people who said they would not be willing to return. So my question is basically, to capture specifically, those 31 people. Those thirty-one people who can't. Come back or were unwilling to come back, have whatever. Do we know what they feel about the virtual?
Dr. Tokes is meeting with teachers regularly uh about their situation, desire to come back. Um, what happened with the numbers in that sense was the question had read, if you answered no to the prior question, please answer this one. We had more. Than actually the thirty-one. Uh, answer that question obviously, because I think we're up to a hundred and sixty-eight for that second question to your point. Um, so exactly out of those thirty-one, are we a hundred percent sure right now? I can't answer that specifically, but I know. You know, in Dr. Tokes's conversations with staff, um, those thirty-one definitely being a part of that. Um, we can shake that out as the.
That is.
As the plan goes forward.
The reason why we put those two bullets at the bottom. That point out there are more people respond to this questions that, that should have based on the last slide. Uh, thus the number of respondents is different, but we also said that it, it still gives us thoughts, feelings and interests. Uh, that matter to us to know uh that we had those number of people. And thus again, of the responding faculty, because more people responded. So of those who responded, that's what this applies to. And I can tell you that uh we have uh updated today about fifty-three people. She's been in uh, in the pipeline of conversations uh regarding uh about returning or not returning. Uh, that she's dealing with right now, that a total number right now sitting around seventy-two. Uh, people that is inclusive of those who are in the inquiry phase and/or who are all already valid. To uh be qualified some type of leave.
Okay. I think Mr. Mr. Dixon as well, real quick, if you don't mind. I think the other thought back then too, again, this was. With the old idea in mind of what the model would look like. And we were at the time thinking potentially. Could we identify teachers and students that wanted a hundred percent virtual and then reorganize the staff? Once we realized that was not possible and that we were going to make the hundred percent virtual option. Simultaneous with the in-person option, then that sort of takes that off the table as an option, as, as an option.
Understood. Uh, I don't want to stop this whole presentation, however, uh, I do, I'll do these two questions, but after that, we need to move on. This is Broncata, then Mr. Miller. Go ahead.
So you're.
Mrs. Broncata, yeah, you need to unmute or something. Unmute.
So you're saying you're going to give us a new model tonight? Is that what you're saying?
I'm going to say it's a revised model. From the original hybrid that we proposed with the survey, still had cohorts and still had AB.
Okay, so.
But we had more, more asynchronous in the old model where this model. Has more asynchronous as per the parent feed, I'm sorry, has more synchronous learning as per the parent feedback.
So, so. The teachers had a lot of questions, twenty pa- twenty pages of questions. Were those questions answered?
We, and that's actually my next slide, and I can talk about how we're addressing those.
Because I think if we answered those questions, that people would be more likely to come back. But they don't feel like they're being addressed.
Right, and we'll get to that when I get to that slide of the thought exchange, Mrs. Broncata. Thank you.
Mr. Miller.
Uh, yes, I believe uh Dr. Bennett may have already answered my question, but. And you're free to wait until later if, if it works in your presentation. Uh, my feeling was that the fifty percent of faculty and staff that did not respond. May not have responded because they're less likely to share that they don't want to return.
I mean, that, that could be, and again, a, a survey often does not get a hundred percent. Uh, response rate. I mean, literally everything you read about surveying says it's virtually impossible to get a hundred percent. Uh, the larger the number, the more it increases the likelihood of fewer people. Uh, uh, of, of getting a hundred percent. The larger the number, it's harder to get a hundred percent.
Okay, um. I'm, I'm trying like, because we have this whole thing to go through. Can we hold the rest of the questions to the end? Fleming, you'll be first, I promise. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Gabriel.
All right. Nate, if you can go to the thought, thank you. So the thought exchange, Mrs. Broncata, this is what you were referring to that we had shared out in the um. Board update this past week. So we, we did open up a thought exchange uh about a week and a half ago for the staff that asked about. And planning for potential run, return to a hybrid model. What supports do you need? What are your questions? What is missing from our planning? We had again about a fifty percent, fifty-seven percent response rate. We had eight hundred seventy-three thoughts posted and over twenty-five thousand ratings, which. To understand how thought exchange works, people post thoughts and then other people rate those thoughts based off of importance. So over the ten days, the um most important ideas and thoughts rise to the top as sort of the trending topics. And um, out of the top fifteen highly rated thoughts, we could sort of break those down into five categories, safety, time, staffing, cleaning and the hybrid schedule. Uh, so Ms. Broncata, to your question, we have been responding to um, you know, issues around safety. Um, obviously, Dr. Tokes has been working uh around the clock around staffing questions. Uh, the health and safety plan, as well as a lot of the literature that's been coming out from Mrs. Pressler's office. Uh, was, is handling sort of the safety piece. Mr. Wharton B. Staff has been putting more out about how the cleaning's happening. We have videos that have been going out regularly. In terms of the hybrid schedule, like that was sort of the big unknown, so some of those questions are going to be answered tonight. With this presentation, I can tell you as well that I've been working very closely with the principals over the past couple of days. Uh, myself, the principals, the coaches, a handful of teachers, we're in the buildings. We're testing out everything from technology to room setup. To how would it happen if we had kids in school and kids at home? Where does the, you know, where do the Mac, the, the Chromebooks have to go versus the desktops? So we're in the process of troubleshooting, taking pictures, taking video. And the plan, as you'll see in the um, in the sort of the phased rollout to get to the point where we start to open. We'll be providing our teachers time for what we're calling transition days. For support for some professional development where a lot of these questions will be addressed. Um, you know, throughout those days as we're testing out whether or not what we thought would work, would work. And I can say from already being at the high school the past day or so and testing it out in a couple of rooms, we're very confident. In the plans that we had and how it's going to roll out for the teachers in terms of being able to present to both students in person and students at home. Um, so to your question, yes, we will be addressing all of the major topics that were brought up. By the, you know, eight hundred seventy-three thoughts for as many participants and the over twenty-five thousand ratings as these are the most important concerns right now. It was just a matter of, we didn't have the full plan, which you'll see tonight and timeline rolled out. Which is a lot of what some of that, some of that was, and as Dr. Better mentioned earlier. Some of the health guidelines and safety, you know, things have been changing. So what might have gone out a month ago? You know, with some of our communication, we are sending out updates, we are sending out clarifying questions, you know, Mrs. Pressler today was working with. The whole leadership team, including building principals. On, you know, a flow chart for what to do if somebody in your building tests for COVID. And, and even that has shifted a little bit, you know, we were using information from Bucks County and a couple of other places to put that together. So we're. We're responding as quickly and as succinctly as we can to some of the changes to make sure that these teachers get those questions answered. Does that answer your question?
It does, but I can tell you that a lot of the frustration the teachers are feeling. Um, is because they don't feel like the questions are being answered. And they don't feel comfortable with what they're being told. So maybe if you're changing things, that will make more of them feel comfortable. Because, you know, teachers reaching out to school board members. Um, which I'm never going to tell them they can't do, even though I know it's been told to them not to do it. Um, and I'm also never going to tell you who they are. But we shouldn't have teachers that are afraid, downright afraid, and if they had the questions answered. Which you're saying will be done, I think more of them will come back. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide, Nate.
So we also believe it's important to make sure people understand a rationale behind what it is that drove making this plan. And uh, you know, this first part is uh directly. Some of the thoughts from our, our building leaders and central office leaders, and again, this is available. I'm not going to read every bullet item on here. Um, but the important ones around that we are trying to address the, the conflict between optimal academic, social, emotional learning and health and safety in schools. So the plan was actually designed to try to keep that in mind. That we obviously know the best place possible for our students is obviously having access to their teachers and working directly with our teachers. Uh, we also know socially, emotionally, uh, that is important also. But we also have to do that in a manner that also is promoting health and safety at the same time and minimizing the spread of COVID nineteen. So the plan is conceptually trying to say, how do we do? The better job of creating optimal academic in, in a learning environment. Given the circumstances that we're struggling with, with regards to health and safety. Um, we know that uh this plan creates less students in the classroom and hallways. That offers greater social distancing than traditional school process. Uh, the masking and uh the social distancing have constantly been mentioned as key factors in absolutely trying. To maintain stable environments that also minimize uh the, the spread of COVID nineteen. And again, we also tried to develop a plan that we believe that, you know, there's no perfect thing. Every health professional says that. You will have positive cases. There's no way to get around it. I mean, it's going to happen, but how do we make sure that they're not so dramatic that it causes us to disrupt the model and the plan? So we're trying to minimize it. Uh, so that we can absolutely also have a stable situation for as best possible our parents. And more importantly, this plan also is built to accommodate some flexibility for our parents with unique circumstances. When things happen, whether it be someone in the household uh becomes ill, whether something develops with a student. So for example. Student develops an issue with COVID nineteen or some other situation and they have to be quarantined, which is what we've had already this week. They still have access to their original teacher. While they're quarantined at home. So that's what we tried to build in this model uh as best we can. We also try to make sure that we're trying to shrink as much as possible, how many different lessons that our, our plans, that our teachers are going to have to make. In delivering instruction to our students. So we tried to close that gap. And, and try to make it easier for them when it comes to planning and preparation for our students. So the big planning and preparation will be delivery of instruction using. People in front of you while some of them home and vice versa. So it's really the model that they're going to have to cater to, but not, not necessarily. Uh, what they're teaching anymore, because it'll be able to be the same thing for every child, no matter where they're sitting. Um, it is heavily aligned with the health and safety plan uh that, that, that was adopted and approved. Uh, you know, the plan was to go to blended by early November. We're, we're moving ahead of schedule, trying to move ahead of schedule and get there faster. Uh, not because we're rushing, but because the data says. We got good numbers that we could actually, we don't have to wait later to, 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 to try to get kids some access to in-person. Because the numbers are telling us, we have good numbers in data that says we could, because you know, moderate says you could be a hybrid. Or, or full virtual. We believe the numbers lean towards, we can do a hybrid and not stay in full virtual. With what we're seeing with the data. Um, and you know, the social distancing was a key component that was approved in the plan, so it supports that. It talked about implementing alternate schedules for students uh between distance and remote learning. Uh, and I, we put the page numbers on there, so if people want to go back and look at it, that's one of the things that we're also uncovering is that. A lot of questions are actually in the health and safety plan, the answers to them. So we're trying to guide people to make sure they're familiar with regards to what's in the plan, because that's what was approved. But it also said that, you know, we should reflect future steps uh to move forward. This plan actually talks about moving forward. Should the, the circumstances actually dictate that we can move forward towards uh, uh, a full open. Uh, you know, the blended reopening in the plan talks about it being a balance and in-person learning and remote. Uh, you know, the whole idea is that we want back in school when health-related issues are improved. So we're phasing that back in, health issues have improved. Uh, you know, limiting the numbers of, of individuals in the classroom and other spaces. Uh, trying to ensure six-foot distancing in the classroom where possible. Uh, that actually helps that if we do have a case, it cuts down on how much contact tracing that has to happen. Uh, it also may minimize how many people have to be quarantined. Uh, and not wiping out an entire classroom or a faculty and staff because they would not fall within that realm. Of requiring it when we go through the protocol uh with the health department. It would actually, from what we're being told, uh, decrease, possibly decrease the number of people who would end up in quarantine potentially in the contact tracing. Um, so the hybrid blended plan again was a part of the health and safety plan. Uh, it was described when I read it as the next phase when circumstances uh presented themselves to go there. Uh, at this time, Mr. Gabriel.
Before we kick it back to Mr. Gabriel. Um, Mr. Godixon, I did like, I, I want to give you your opportunity, not opening up for everybody, but before we get too far away, go ahead. Question was.
Thank, thank you. So you know, part of my question is probably where Dr. Bettin is right now, and that is, will we allow students to. Continue virtual five days a week instead of coming into school and will we be live streaming from every classroom?
So uh, the answer to the question is, so I got an example, a parent, student has a medical condition or something happens. They will still be to see that, they could choose to be at home and, and still have access to the teacher. Uh, one of the things that you will see in the model is that we try to create a situation where we create a safe zone for the teachers. Where uh the classroom setup is making sure that there's nothing closer than six feet to the teacher space. We're saying teachers, for lack of a better term, in the box, like the batter's box. Uh, I hate to say that, but people get that example. And that we have also have to, because of uh FERPA and other things, make sure it's focused on the teacher. And not seeing other students and what's going on and exposing them. So uh, what they're testing out now is that our devices will allow the teacher to be seen and instructed, and those kids who are home. Will see the same, see the teacher uh like the kids who are sitting in class. Um, but if a kid is sick or a parent is not comfortable, they just need to go through our tennis protocol that we're going to uh, uh, roll out and say that. I just, I'm in cohort A, I still don't want my kid to come in. Then we will accommodate that. In this process.
And then the second question, you know, would be in regards to, we know that there's twenty-seven teachers right now that do not want to come in. To the buildings. Do we have staff to replace those teachers?
As I understand, and, and uh, Miss Dr. Talks made it jump in, the last report I got is that right now, uh, we're fully staffed. Uh, Dr. Talks, you, you, now, that's not counting the people in the pipeline who got. You know, and it's a process. We use what we call presumptive approved. So we have to plan for the worst. And then you go through the process that she goes through to say, do you really qualify? For frac, uh, do you qualify for effort, whatever the circumstances, she works through that, but we. Try to look at if all of them. How do we function? Because that's the worst-case scenario. The best case is they're there with us. Maybe they'll feel better to Miss Broncato's point that the way we're designing it, that some of those would go away with people who are considering it. So we're, we're, you know, hopefully that will address some of those issues. Um, you know, the teamwork on the plan and then we were, as we always tell you. This needed to have board's eyes just following protocol before we went public with it, which is why the public is getting it now. Um, and then we tried, we released it Monday and a video to try to accompany it, because at that point. We'd given the board access to it because we knew you'd probably get phone calls. Uh, if we released it to the public first, then you'd be like, I haven't seen it yet. You know, um, Dr. Talks, that I misspeak about uh being fully, has that changed since two days ago when you met with me?
Okay, unmute. You gotta unmute.
So. So to follow up, you know, only fifty-one percent responded of the staff. Which means that could be another twenty-seven teachers or twenty more, twenty-seven staff that. Also would have hesitations about coming in. So now we're talking about not twenty-seven, but you know, fifty, fifty-five maybe.
Yeah, that, that, that could be, which is why. That process continued regardless of this, where she, like I said, had, the latest report was fifty-three. Who are inquiring. And then you had about nineteen, twenty, who I think were already uh in the pipeline. So we're, the last number I got was a total of like seventy-two uh people. That's a combination of either. Uh, questioning and/or already approved. So yeah, absolutely. Is that correct, Dr. Tokes?
Yes, it is, but one of the things I want to include is that I have um. Established a meeting with all school secretaries and principals every week, every Thursday. And we go over staffing together to make sure that there are no surprises. We go over. Like tonight, we presented a personnel agenda. I wanted to make sure every principal knew who was on the agenda and that it was covered. I also went over everybody I had in frontline at that time who had inquired. Or started an application for leave. And I also gave those names to principals as well, and again, asked, were there any surprises? And are you covered? I think the key to this is to make sure that we have wide-open communication between the schools and HR. And that I am pressing our third-party support with Kelly Services to provide us the support we can. to provide us the support we can. I have also, as a new person to Pennsylvania, learned how to expedite um teachers through the emergency certification process at the state level. So I've been working on doing that and pressing those to Dr. Ben, so we can get more in the pipeline there as well.
And to piggyback on Mr. Fleming's question, I just want to remind that those who are listening and to the board, the staffing is constantly fluid. Um, and and that's uh, you know, one of the the things that we're trying to try to keep a handle on it. Uh, but things happen. We're trying to make sure we try to develop a plan for a bench, uh because one of the challenges is there is a shortage. Uh, our neighboring districts, when we meet our superintendent's meeting, they 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 have shortages. They're, they they don't always have enough teachers, and and that's been shared with us openly, that there is a critical shortage of substitutes and or teachers uh to with vacancies. Uh, one of our neighboring districts actually has a need for 17 teachers. Uh, and they're similar in size to us. Um, and uh they're structured very similar to us, and I'll just leave it that way. And that narrows it down a lot, doesn't it? But they need 17 teachers, and I talked to that my colleague, though. And that's the, and I always say that to make the parents and the public aware that that staffing was a problem even before COVID-19, that with the shortage of teachers. And and so uh that's not new, it just could uh magnify it.
Now, a a follow-up question here to this, you know, in regards to the substitutes. We are switching to a new substitute service. Have we gotten good feedback? And do we have a nice pool of substitutes to come in?
And Mr. Godson, uh, God.
Godixson.
Godixson, uh, I'm still learning, and I apologize uh earlier for not uh getting that correct and and properly addressing you. So my apologies. Uh, Dr. Talks, do you want to uh respond to the current status with uh Kelly Services?
That was one of the, am I on? Can you hear me? Okay, that was actually one of the impetus to drive the um weekly meeting with my principals and with the secretaries is because I was getting um negative feedback. So I needed to hear exactly what was happening out in the field so that I could press the third party to assist us, um, which I have done. And again, learning the um state system and how I can push forward teachers to provide to Kelly Services to help us is a is a new process that's also beginning. It's a name, it, I would say we are in an emerging stage of support. But I am optimistic that we can get this running um fluidly if we continue to keep that dialogue moving. And I keep hearing from the principals and the principal, I keep relating to the principals to Kelly. I've even talked to the principals last week about getting on a call with Kelly Services, me and them, so I'm not having to be the conduit all the time so that they can actually talk to the people that they are servicing. And all the principals were in agreement on that as well.
We um, these are all very good questions. I think they're helping to clarify things for folks. Um, but we also have quite a bit more presentation to get through. Mrs. Cross, and you asked to ask one question, I'm going to let let that one happen. And then let's please get back to the presentation. So Mrs. Cross, and go ahead.
Thank you. So I was just wondering, we had, um, I heard we have sufficient staff. Is that for the hybrid model? Or is that just for, we have sufficient staff in general if we were to come back by days?
Based on the questions and the uh meetings that I've had, it is a current state. It is our current state of how we are functioning. Based on what we will come back um with, I think that there are teachers I have talked to tens and tens and tens of teachers in the last two months. And um they are waiting, a lot of them are waiting for the decision that is made tonight. A lot of them are seeking um the what what is their rights within the law. Uh, but I think the decision tonight will determine a lot of my conversations for the next week or so.
Thank you. And with that, let's move along. Sorry. Thank you for allowing the uh interjection, Doctor.
So uh for uh Mr. Gabriel, if you don't mind, for the sake of time, uh, I'm going to uh the synchronous learning that was there to make sure that everyone understood uh what that means. So we have a common language. We also included asynchronous. Um, so there's not a whole lot of discussion that we need to have to. We wanted to make sure the general public was on the same page, because when they see the plan, we wanted to make sure they understood what those terms mean. So I don't think we really, unless someone has a question about that.
I would say just in one sentence, we've said this before at board meetings, but synchronous learning is live streaming with your teacher in real time. Asynchronous is your kid logs on whenever that's convenient, and they do pre-plan videos and activities.
Right. I would say just look at the the first bullet on each slide. Uh, absolutely captures uh the definition. Uh, the other stuff is is kind of the tools that we use to do those things. But the first bullet on each slide, which is synchronous, the students and teachers in-class learning at the same time, whether it would uh uh, you know, be virtual or rote, but everybody's doing it at the same time. Asynchronous, the students and teachers will be in-class learning at different times. So the teacher actually could not be necessarily streaming or live, but you're still expected to be in school for some ever designated period of time. Uh, with that said, um, uh, Dr. Talks, uh, will go through the plan for return. Uh, we tried to, but when she gets uh introduced, this balance notice with the reality of how do we get things moving sooner rather than later? So so that's kind of what the mix was in in that calendar. Dr. Talks?
Yes, I want to make sure I'm on. Everybody can hear me? Yes. Okay, so between October 14th and 16th, all faculty from K through 12 are encouraged to come back to the building so that they can be provided with tech support and also get their room structured in a way that they feel comfortable. On the 16th, you'll notice that in the AM, they will have virtual synchronous learning for all K-12. And in the PM, we're going to provide asynchronous, so we can do teacher prep for all K-12. On October 19th, we're going to have a two-hour delay and also provide more teacher prep for all of K-12. We will also have all K-12 return to the buildings that day so that we can make sure that our technology is running smoothly and then mitigate any issues that we might have with our technology. On October 20th, you'll notice that the whole day is asynchronous so that we can provide professional development for all K-12 teachers. Then on October 21st, it's an all-day virtual synchronous learning day for K-12. And then October 22nd, it's the elementary hybrid returns to schools with K-5. So I think between the support that we provide between the 14th and 16th, all the teacher prep that we're providing and the professional development, that teachers should feel more comfortable before we launch this new phase.
On the 19th, just to be clear, we are discussing, rather just to make that simple, just make it a true half-day AM and PM to to keep it clean and not creating confusion uh for our parents a- and our students. Uh, so it was originally scheduled as a two-hour delay for data uh uh analysis. And we're looking at really making a true half-day AM and PM uh to simplify it. Those other days, the 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 19, 20, and 21, we're actually trying to test our network also and have as many of our 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 teachers uh and staff hitting the network at the same time to make sure that it can withstand uh uh the system. It won't have the true uh feel of all the students being present, because uh they will not be uh in the building yet, but it will give us like every teacher hitting a network at the same time, uh, trying to communicate with their students. So we have some time to identify if we got a problem with the system. Uh, that everyone tells me they believe it, but we're like, uh, let's uh do it and see if it withstands it.
Couple of board member questions on this schedule. First, Mr. Godixson, then Mrs. Brancata.
So uh, on October 22nd, teachers six through 12 will be in-school teaching virtual.
Correct. Everyone, yeah, yes, they will be back in their classroom. Teaching from their classroom is the plan. And I think that'll come out uh in the next part. Is that in the next slide, I think? Yes. But yes, you're you're already thinking ahead. The idea is that everyone is working from their uh classroom also. Again, trying to get everybody acclimated, situated, uh, because IT can then, i- if you find problems, that is also meant that we're testing our network and they can respond to the school or the classroom and say, hey, uh, so we got elementary starting first, we got it, we think it's manageable to try to get that done. But we also got our teachers in six through 12. So if we run into glitches and network problems, they're actually able to deploy teams to try to address that before we hit the network with more students. You know.
Mrs. Brancata.
So I, so I understand, I understand wanting to go back. Uh, everybody has to go back by the 19th. But today is the 13th. That only gives our teachers who have children in other school districts, six days to find childcare. Do we have anything in place if they can't find childcare that quickly?
Uh, the principals, they will be advised in this process to uh work and consult with their principals. Should they have any concerns with regards to being able to 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 come back and report that date? But we believe that as a system, we had to have an expected date of return, else it would just drag on.
Okay, I understand that.
Principals have been advised and that we, and they agree that we will allow and communicate to teachers that if they have an issue such as that, they need to discuss it with their principal, and the principal will work with them to try to adjust as necessary. But we want to have as many people back in the building, working, and we address individual cases, case by case.
So you kind of just avoided answering that. So what, and I, and I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying if we have teachers who have a true need and they just can't find daycare, are we prepared to help them out? To come back?
When you say help them out, the principal will uh work with them to address the leave issue, and they may end up having to take leave, and that may be the case. But if we have 10 people here and the two have a problem, the two need to talk, their supervisor, principals have been authorized by us to try to work out a plan, so we know, okay, if you can't make it on the 19th, what is it that we're targeting that you're going to be back? Because the flip side of that is, if you're not there, how do we help you prepare? Also, because we also got that issue with teachers saying, I need to make sure that I'm there to get help to make sure I can actually deliver in this model. So we will probably have more people who are able to come in and smaller number of people who may need to get unique circumstances. And the principals have been told they're authorized to try to work with those people on a case-by-case basis to try to work through their challenges to get back here. And what would that look like?
Mr. Miller.
Yes, uh. I'm confident this is all going to work. But just so we are uh have a fallback position, I think when we announce this as a final plan, where we list October 22nd, maybe we want to list a rain date of October 26th, if everything else from the 14th to the 21st does not fall in place as we expect.
Uh, we we discussed it, and I think your point is well-taken, that we probably should go ahead and identify what's that backup date. So for instance, if we have a network problem and we uncover it, what's that backup date? And and what's the plan for how far we back up? Because when you see the schedule, we literally have to chunk it, because we got a plan for fate, you know, the the middle school transitioning and the high school. So we can include uh that information, kind of chunk it, because they're built off of each other with the idea that we're getting everybody moving in that direction. So we will, uh, the team heard that, we will identify that, for lack of a term, rain date or technology failure date or whatever, glitch date.
We don't fail.
Absolutely. Yep.
Mrs. Cross.
Um, just as a question, if a parent has a child who um is compromised or something going on at home, they don't have to do this part? They can stay.
They can be virtual. Yep, the way we're doing it, I guess they, yep, yep.
All right, great.
This model would be like you're seeing in your camera, they should be to see their teacher. They were trying to create, because we're also trying to close the gap on how much different preparation a teacher has to do. That the modification for the teacher, why we want to get them back in the building is learning how to teach from this, what is the total opposite of what we always want from a really staggered stationary spot, so that we're making sure that the kids at home can can see them, but we're also protecting uh the confidentiality of other students being exposed on the net and all those types of things. Uh, but yes, they could. Yep.
Mr. Panofsky. And then after Mr. Panofsky's question, I think we should continue with the presentation, so we get through it.
My question, can you hear me? Yes. Okay. My question's pretty short and not to belabor the point, but it is something that a lot of parents have been emailing about. And unless a teacher does not return to the classroom, like if they have to take leave or something, even if a student stays full virtual, they'll remain with their current teacher, as well as the kids that are going hybrid will remain with their current teacher. There's not going to be, we're not going to take kids out of their class because they're staying full virtual. The only reason the teacher would change is if that teacher has to take leave or something.
So I never say never. The foundation of the plan is that if I had, I'll just use these number, 24 kids in my class, I'm the teacher of record, I would still be the teacher of record in 24, 24. You know, now, that could happen that one class only has 10 show the day, because we have um, the example she said, that this student, we're saying they're got uh immunosystem compromised and they need to stay home, uh, we would accommodate that, so it may be only 10 in that situation. Obviously, if we have uh some people, a person who qualifies for leave or a medical condition, the principals wouldn't make, just have to make changes. But the foundation of the plan is that's your class, that's who we're assigning you to. Uh, the other thing that could uh uh, so unless we lose a teacher um, or uh, there there is a, some other type of um adjustment that has to be made because of some unique circumstance that happens. But the foundation starts with that is your teacher of record, uh, if I'm remembering correct, guys. Yeah.
All right, let's um, for now, let's continue on with the presentation. And then, you know, I'm sure there'll be another moment where we have questions, but go on.
Uh, I think Mr. Gabriel, or what is this, K-5? I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Doster.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, our plan for return for our students K-5, um, October 22nd would be uh our Thursday and Friday, the 23rd, we would bring Cohort A in on the 22nd with the focus that day on classroom community, uh, social, emotional lessons with those students, as well as the rituals and routines in our buildings. Um, Cohort B on that Thursday would be doing asynchronous work. And then on Friday, the 23rd, the cohorts and the expectations would flip for Friday. So the first two days um would be just an opportunity to get students back in the building. We do have concerns in that regard, because students have not physically been in the elementary schools, um, or any schools actually, since uh about eight months now. So we want to get the students re-acclimated to the schools, re-acclimated to the classrooms, understanding uh the the differences that have to occur now in regard to social distancing and the flow of traffic through the building and those sorts of things as well. Um, and then what we are targeting is that Monday, the uh 26th, as day one of the full implementation of our two-cohort hybrid plan.
These two days also are the other days of now truly hitting the network with students in the true model. Uh, so that's part of the the whole rituals and routines. So how do you move in the building? If you got one-way hallways and stuff, but also now we're going to have a bunch of people hitting with kids in a in building now to make sure, does the network hold up to it? So it provides two days of that situation where we're doing that with that go-live date for elementary, October 26th. Uh, is, whoo, I can't remember. Is that Dr. Bass, or is that who's 612, uh, plan for return?
I'm happy to handle that. Um, so our our plan for uh the secondary level is to remain with the timeline that uh was in our board-approved. I'm sorry, am I not loud enough, Robert? Yeah.
Yeah, I hear you fine.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, our our timeline for secondary is to to remain true to what uh was initially passed in our health and safety plan back in the summer. And and to Dr. Ben's point, this phase return gives us the opportunity to to build bandwidth as as we go on uh and to make sure that we're prepared to handle our students uh fluidly. So the week of November 9th, uh, we would, we would run the first two days of our A cohort uh classes. If you remember at the high school, uh, we have, we have alternate day classes. So it would take the entirety of Monday and Tuesday for the students to see all eight of their teachers who they typically see. At the middle level, uh, that some of their courses rotate as well. So it would take two days for each cohort to see all of the teachers uh that they've been receiving uh instruction virtually from during the school year to date. Wednesday would be the virtual synchronous slash asynchronous day. And when we present um the middle and high school models, later on this evening, you'll see what that day looks like. Um, and then we flip on Thursday and Friday, Cohort B comes into school, spends two days with their teachers traditionally, and Cohort A participates synchronously, live and virtually.
Uh, this is uh, Mr. Wardby? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Greenwood. Yep.
Uh, good evening. The operations support staff return uh is shown here.
Uh, with our custodians and our maintenance teams, they returning to their regular schedules, uh, yesterday, Monday, October 12th. For, uh, our bus drivers and food service teams, the remainder of those staffs would return, uh, to the buildings on, uh, the week of October 19th, um, for elementary and then on a modified schedule. And then on a full schedule, uh, the week of November 2nd.
All right, back to me for the elementary schedule. So what you're seeing here tonight is, uh, again, a hybrid version of the elementary schedule, which is really not that dissimilar from the original model that was proposed to you back in August. Uh, we are still functioning on a two cohort model, Cohort A, Cohort B. And, uh, with Wednesdays being our virtual day. Now, our virtual day on Wednesdays, our faculties would be, uh, operating from their classrooms in their schools. And our students at the elementary level would be following the same schedule that they're following right now, which is a synchronous day with their synchronous work ending at 1:40 and asynchronous work for the students continuing to 3:15, uh, in their day. And then that would be a, uh, a consistent lunchtime as well, which was something that parents initially at the start of the year were, were, um, voicing concerns about. Um, our in-person and our virtual synchronous learning days, you can see Cohort A, we plan to have Monday, Tuesdays, and on those days Cohort B is doing the virtual synchronous. And then the opposite would occur for Cohort A and B on Thursday, Friday. So our students, while they are virtual synchronous, um, on two days, they still would be following along with the planned instruction with the students that are in the in-person cohort in the classrooms. So the teachers are planning a five-day, uh, plan for their instruction and the learning experiences for our students. And our students have access to the classrooms, uh, for the duration of the week.
Before I, Mr. Panofsky had his hand up, but before, how much more is there to the presentation itself? Are we closing into the end or should we take?
Yeah, the middle school and the high school, uh, model that the two people, uh, share with you.
Okay. I'm going to give Mr. Panofsky the floor here, but then let's just kind of plow through to the end of the presentation and we can go from there. Mr. Panofsky?
So my question might actually count for middle school and high school as well. Um, initially, we had Wednesdays set aside for like real deep cleaning in the schools and in the classrooms. So if the teachers are in their rooms teaching, when is this cleaning going to happen? I guess that's Mr. Wardenby?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely. Uh, great question, Mr. Panofsky. Uh, we have the benefit of having a second shift that works till 11:30. So we'll be able to bang out the school every night. Uh, the deep cleaning, uh, was there just in case if we have COVID positives and we have to concentrate on more of the classrooms wherever the event took place. But we're in the building till about 11:30 at night. We have plenty of cleaning product. Uh, each school is outfitted with multiple, uh, what we call bioblasters, the electric static sprayers. So we'll be hitting it every night, including Wednesday.
Thank you.
And I think we can, right, uh, go past this, uh, Andy. Yep. And, yep, this one you might want to give a little bit.
Yes, just in looking at our hybrid schedule for our in-person days, this is a breakdown of our, uh, traditional school day, the 8:45 to 3:30. And what you're looking at is a breakdown of the minute allocations, uh, for the different components of the elementary school day. Now, we come to a total of 405 minutes, but within those 405 minutes, there will be variations, um, among the three elementary schools based off of our responsiveness to our unique student communities and student needs within the building. So this is consistent among the three elementary schools. However, there are variations, um, based off of three, uh, unique sets of learners that we get among those three elementary communities.
We, we do want to answer a question that has come up about, uh, typical about screen time for elementary students. If you look at this type of schedule, those students that are home would actually get a break whenever recess happens, uh, lunch happens. And then potentially what's going on and when, it could be another break. So that's also an opportunity that we're trying to address the screen time break. And then of course, it is recommended as part of the mitigation strategies is what they call mass breaks. So that would be a screen break for the students when we take a mass break. So we're also trying to factor in, how do we address the elementary level screen time issue that you hear about quite often?
And one last thing with the, the minute allocations with, uh, 120 minutes, for example, for the RILA, the teacher's not going to be and have those students sitting there for 120 consecutive minutes on the screen. There'll be activities that will also provide those breaks within that time as well. The next couple of slides will address our English language learners and our learning support students. Um, we are bringing them in, uh, looking at each student individually and providing them the opportunity to be physically in the building four days a week. And they, every student is assigned a cohort. So if they are a Cohort A student, they would attend their Cohort A schedule on Monday, Tuesday. And then on Thursday, Friday, they would be with their, uh, ELL teacher, uh, receiving their instruction and, and support in that classroom as well. So they're going to have access, uh, to the ELL program four days a week in person. And following that same model, our special education students, uh, decisions made by our IEP teams across the three elementary schools, they will follow the same model in terms of everyone is assigned to a cohort. They will attend, uh, the regular days with their cohort. And then on the, um, synchronous days, they will be with their learning support teacher and they will be attending, uh, other classes such as their specials, uh, virtually. Um, and, uh, again, being there though, for that in-person support on those other days. So they will be there four days.
And, and let's, just to be clear to people, uh, they could be two to four days because again, IEP team drives that conversation because you also want least restricted environment, allow them to participate with their peers. So if the IEP team says, oh, they can follow the normal schedule, then we want them to be like the rest of their colleagues and peers. Uh, but if they need additional support, it will be like four days. Does that make sense? Uh, so I just want to be transparent that you could have a student who looks, follows the same exact schedule as the other students because IEP team determines they don't need to have any changes. Or a student could be there four days because they really need to have that continuity. Uh, just to be clear on that model. Obviously, this is an important question, Mr. Wardenby, that people always ask about is how are we going to do this? How are we going to keep kids safe when they get to the large, uh, congregal areas with breakfast and lunch?
Thank you, Dr. Ben. Uh, the student meal areas at the elementary level will be inside their classrooms. So breakfast will be a grab and go, very similar to what we're doing right now, what we have been doing for the last several months, uh, at McDonald Elementary School and the serving sites that we have. Lunch will be delivered to the classrooms. And then obviously we'll be putting out the larger garbage cans, uh, for waste and refuse and we'll come and haul it and dispose of it. Teachers' meals and teachers' meal breaks will be able to happen in the cafeteria, the faculty room, outside if the weather is nice, as long as they're socially distant.
Will students have the option to bring their own meal?
Sure. They can bring their own.
Good evening, everyone. So I'll be talking first about the, the middle school schedule, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. Mr. Hayes is going to speak to Wednesday. It's a little bit different. So much of what you've heard so far is very similar to what's going on at the elementary schools. So you can see at the model, Monday and Tuesday will be our first cohort. They're going to be in person. Uh, and like we've mentioned in these other models, cohort be it, on those days, will be at home, following virtually along with their teacher. Uh, this switches on Thursday and Friday. Uh, when you look down to the ELL and to our special education students, uh, again, this will be determined by the IEP team whether they will be in attendance two or four days. And then you can see below, we do have our Wednesday schedule listed. So in our schedule, one of the, one of the larger changes that we'll have for the middle schools, currently at the moment, our schedule ends at 12:15. Students have a lunch break and then they move on to asynchronous education. Under our new, our new model, we will go back to our original bell schedule. Uh, however, our Wednesday schedule will, will remain the same. So if you can switch to the next slide, please. This is the, this is the regular bell schedule that we've used in the middle school for at least the last few years. So one of the changes for students that they'll encounter is, is longer class periods. Uh, and they will also have separate lunches. At this time, everyone is taking lunch, uh, at the same time and then returning asynchronously. So this would be a change for our students, but a return to normalcy.
And good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? All right, great. So our Wednesday schedule, I'm excited to share with you that it will remain the same Wednesday schedule that we currently have for our students. So nothing changes for Wednesday. Students will all be at home and they will go through the first half of the day with their synchronous instruction with their teachers and all students together. And the afternoon will be the same as it is currently with asynchronous instruction. And just to reiterate, our breakfast and lunch will be similar to it, as it is in the elementary school as well.
Uh, hello again, everyone. Uh, for the high school, the, the hybrid model, uh, not to belabor the point because it looks a lot similar to the elementary and middle school levels. But when the students are in the building or at home on Monday, Tuesday and Thursday and Friday, we're going to revert to our 90-minute period blocks of time. Uh, we will have three staggered lunches, as you can see here, with a 15-minute buffer in between. Uh, for the students that are in the building, this will give sufficient passing time to move from class to class in a socially distant and efficient manner. Uh, and for the students who are at home, it'll give them a similar break as well between classes before they transition from, from one class period to the next. Each day, the students will, will continue to just see four classes per day. Uh, if you could advance to the next slide. Uh, the Wednesday schedule will remain as it is in our virtual model right now. So our current, uh, model is what, uh, our students will be also participating in, in our hybrid schedule. Uh, we felt that this was important because it provides continuity. It gives students access to their teachers. It gives teachers the opportunity to schedule time with students to maybe reteach a concept or make up an assessment, um, or to extend the concept. And if we were to need to, uh, flex back into a virtual schedule, the schedule would remain the same. So it's, it's that continuity for everyone involved. And if we could advance to the next one, please. This is, uh, what Cohort A's schedule would look like. Uh, traditional Monday, Tuesday, virtual Thursday, Friday. Cohort B, which is in the next slide, which will simply flip. Uh, they're at home Monday, Tuesday, and they're in on Thursday, Friday. And, uh, the most important slide, I think, is the next one, where you can see if a student is fully virtual, if for whatever reason, they're not able to return with us for hybrid, their schedule will mirror everyone else's and they'll still be with the same teachers they've been with all year. And if they do decide to move from virtual into hybrid, they will still remain with the same classes, same teachers. So it really, it provides continuity and flexibility for all, which we thought was really important. And I think you've heard other people say that this evening as well. Final slide, breakfast and lunch, similar to the other levels, will be grab and go. Uh, we're going to be using seating in the cafeteria as well as the library. Uh, seating may be at a table or a desk, depending on the space students opt to eat in. And we will be delivering food in two different areas to keep the students as separate as possible. The traditional cafeteria food court, as well as the concession stand, uh, that we have out by the weight room in the gym. Uh, this should allow us to divert traffic enough so that students can get their lunch efficiently, uh, but not have to cross paths, uh, any more than necessary.
Wherever possible, there was a, a high interest, uh, from the team to, if we have to use a cafeteria, to try to use desk format because then we could actually make sure that they're six feet apart. If it's not a desk, then obviously we could designate it marked spots where students are supposed to sit, uh, to get the six feet. And also the recommendation obviously is facing the, uh, same direction, not facing each other, those types of mitigation strategies. Mr. Wardenby?
Uh, we lost you.
My apologies. There we go. Uh, thank you, Dr. Ben. So the room setup is based on CDC, Department of Health, both, uh, PA Department of Health and Bucks County, as well as PDE. And the idea is to have six-foot social distancing in the classroom. So the seats and student desks are six feet apart, meaning the student's head to the next student's head, like we're sitting out here right now. We've removed extraneous furniture so we can maximize the floor space. Uh, that would be your soft seating. Uh, obviously you go into some classrooms, it's more collaborative in learning style. Uh, how I went to school, it was all rows, envision that now. Uh, faculty, staff and students will be required to wear facial coverings at all times. Obviously, we heard about if you get a little too close, now we're going to have to do contact tracing if that were the case. Uh, there's a representative sample of the classrooms. I believe most of you saw the video. We're going to be doing other videos as well. And then the, the last bullet, I'm going to let Anthony, Dr. Uh, Mr. Gabriel take care of this. This is, uh, portion.
Thank you, Mr. Wardenby. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, and, and some of what we're working the king style in over the next week, which we started this week, we'll take it the next week with the teachers, is I think to Mr. Godikson's, uh, language, we will be live streaming. Uh, the teacher will be in front of the room, teaching, uh, streaming the lesson from their desktop to their active whiteboard, uh, so that, and then that will be shared on a Google Meet with students at home. Uh, so that they're, all they're seeing is really the teacher and the whiteboard, uh, or whatever's on the whiteboard and on the, the desktop computer. Mobile device will be very close by so the teacher can manage the backend of the lesson and the students can also hear and see from, from that angle. So that is what we are working on right now, to test out, uh, across classrooms at all levels. We've had our coaches working, our principals working, our building techs have been around helping out. We're going to continue to troubleshoot that as we go. Uh, we do know that in some rooms, we're going to have to move some equipment around, uh, because of where the setups are, but we, we're starting to make a list and, and starting to buy a lot of really long HDMI cords right now. So we're, we're going to have that all set up and ready to go by the time we open.
I'll pause for a second since we've gotten to like a thing. Mr. Godikson, you had your hand up earlier.
Uh, I'll probably go to the, you know, most recent, you know, part of the presentation. What happens, you know, with students that refuse to wear masks?
So, uh, uh, right now, what is mostly being discussed and from, uh, around the county uh, in conversation, and we're trying to decide the best method is that obviously we try to correct them in a progressive, for lack of a better term, discipline process. Uh, we do have extras if we have someone who should be getting theirs, uh, uh, on, you know, we're not trying to be the mask supplier, but we have ordered and stocked up with the blue type that you see that they have on, uh, to provide it. Uh, but fair to comply will, uh, one, one case result, a pair being called, have to come get your student uh, and, and take them home, uh, until they can comply because we also have the health and safety issue. And because we have this virtually now, then you're just going to have to stay at home and do it virtually because we're doing it this way. If everything works out, we have the ability to say, we're still giving you an education. You just won't have the right to come in person if you don't comply with expectation. Because this model will allow us to do that now and say that, you know, and if you refuse to comply while you're at school, then it's like, you know, we'll call the parent. You're going to have to come pick up your son or daughter. If, uh, they are, uh, not able to come get them for some reason, legitimate reason, uh, just like you would if you had a case, we have a quarantine rule. They're going to have to put the student to it because we can't have them running around exposing other students. Uh, because typically what the best method, uh, also mitigation of issues immediately is remove the student from the population and put them in a quarantine area.
Mrs. Crossen?
On my question for, I know that when the kids are not in school, since we had such a high, high demand for the, um, meals, are we still going to be, uh, providing meals to the community when the kids are not in school?
Great question. Uh, Ms. Crossen, yes, we are. So even better than that is the feeding program is going to be continuing free until June 30th, 2021. So when we start school at the middle, at, uh, McDonald Elementary, we're going to be moving the setup there to the high school. And then obviously we'll figure out when the high school opens, do how that works. But the four serving communities that we go to right now, the three parks in Glenwood Bucks, will still be served.
Mr. Panofsky?
With the masks, um, one thing that, and I think, Mr. Miller, Mr. Godikson, you can correct me if I'm wrong, what Middle Bucks is doing is actually making masks part of the uniform policy in the school. So that, so it's, it's actually in the school policy, it's a uniform policy and any refusal to abide by it will be treated as an infraction against the uniform policy. And I think that at least codifies it and makes it a little more enforceable that this is part, until we change it back, this is part of the school uniform policy.
All right, Mr. Doster, I guess, Mr. President, yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to, um, in regard to the masks, the, the colleagues around the county.
I just wanted to, in regard to the masks, the colleagues around the county, I think at the secondary, the middle, and the elementary levels, that are already in a hybrid or having students in the building, they're all giving us pretty much the same feedback is that this is not an issue. The kids are actually very compliant. They are wearing their masks. And for, you know, for example, for the hundreds of students we'll have in the building, if there's four or five, that probably would be a lot. But our colleagues around the county and the state are telling us that the students are incredibly compliant.
Mr. Godikson, in light of that, do you still have a question?
Yeah, I still have two questions. My understanding is that especially at students currently attend school Monday through Thursday. So they will encounter a change in their schedule, if I understood everything correctly?
What I'm understanding, and I asked Ms. Bolden to correct me if I'm wrong, is any change is still driven by the IEP. So if they're already getting services, they wouldn't change unless there's something done with the IEP team. Ms. Bolden?
So, yes, we would have to, if this plan is approved, we would have to look at changing the asynchronous day for the students who are currently enrolled, because it makes sense for transportation, so that we can be aligned with the entire district. Previously, we aligned with the IU programs, who have an asynchronous day of Friday. But now we need to align with Centennial School District if the date of, the day of asynchronous changes.
How many students do we have in elementaries that that would affect?
How many in elementary?
Because that's the nearest date that's coming up, right?
Right. So I would say in elementary, we may have fifty or less.
And their first asynchronous day that would be moved would be the week of, not October, I guess they wouldn't have an asynchronous day now on October the 23rd?
So, so what I would say is, depending on how this plan is, and talking with our parents, we have to see what works best for our parents. So we would have to transition this appropriately for our parents. But it, it all depends upon what happens tonight. But I would say within the next two weeks, we would do that transition. But we need to hear from our parents. And we couldn't have the conversation with our parents until today, because this board agenda wasn't made public until yesterday.
No, I understand. This is not, this is a good question, though.
Yeah, it is.
The first day, in other words, that was, that is currently a asynchronous learning day, is the October the 23rd, right? That that would be now a, that would be a day where people, and then the next time, yeah, October 26th would be a Wednesday, or 20, 27th, 27th, right?
26th is a Monday. So the 28th.
28th, yeah, because it's the Wednesday that they, so we have to give, like, I mean, we just have to be on top of making sure that those folks have noticed, that's all. All right.
And the, the other question is, in regards to students attending MBIT, are they going to be in school the same day that they attend MBIT, or is there going to be conflict?
That's a great question, yes. There will be no conflict. MBIT did a great job of collaborating with each of the sending school districts. So their hybrid model for the Centennial students matches ours. So our cohorts will not have any conflict. The times work as they do when we're traditionally in school. So there will be no issues with MBIT.
Mr. Godikson, I will say that to your question, which is a good one, to compliment the team, there were a lot of discussion of models. The team, as you can see, came together to try to plan, to create some continuity through K through 12. And one of the conversations was around, since we started MBIT, how do we minimize any disruption to that process? So some of that influenced the development of this schedule also. But then others at the lower levels, middle and elementary, they said, okay, then let's try to get on the same page and make this work to create some continuity, as well as a conversation that I couldn't remember that the other change that could happen potentially for a teacher is if they tried to, they tried to match up cohorts for siblings. So depending on how that flushed out, that could be an example why a tweak would be made, because obviously, we're trying to make it easier on the parent. So that would be like a unique situation where, to your question earlier.
That would be a parent choice in that event.
Yeah, I mean, you know, like your cohort, they tried to match up, you know, because parents could have kids in different levels, and you can't have one going on A, B, or B day. So they try to line it up to make it work, so the parent knew exactly which kids are home each day, preferably the same day, because it could be the benefit of an older kid being home with a younger kid.
Yeah.
That works for the parent, for example.
All right, can we continue with the presentation?
One more follow-up question here. You know, today, I know Council Rock North, you know, had to close because of COVID, you know, taking place there. Now, if there's any of those students, obviously, there are students from Council Rock North that would go to MBIT, could that affect our students going to MBIT?
Well, if they're, we're in, so the process is if they fit the close contact rule, then that could trigger us having to make a decision about our student being quarantined. So absolutely, yes. But remember, the good news is, as you probably already know, MBIT was trying to make sure they had the six-foot distance, which if it, if they, if, if it's honored and done, that shouldn't be the problem. If everyone adhered to it, that would actually minimize that situation happening. Is it possible that it could happen? Absolutely. That's why we never say never. But their structure is very similar to this one, with regards to trying to have safety mitigation in place, which is one of the reasons why we were very easy to say to the board, we recommend letting them go back, because they had a really good model in place that we felt was based on the data and the numbers. They were doing the things that needed to try to keep people safe. But it's, you know, cases will happen. We know that.
Let's continue with the rest of the presentation, and then can we, you'll be first up next time, Mr. Miller.
The next portion is just to communicate some extra information to our parents about what happens if there's a positive case. That is always a huge question of concern. So we tried to share some information about what is a case, what's the contact, and what's the secondary contact, so they understand the process that we go through, should there be a case. And again, I'm not going to read all that for the sake of time. It's available. If someone has questions, they can email us. Karen Pressler will obviously respond to answer any of those health-related questions. This is what we use as part of our decision-making and student-staff process and flow. We also have developed an internal document that we rolled out with regards to addressing staff. Should we have a contact issue with the staff? Because we just recently had it, and we had to move quickly. And in particular case, that if it happens like on a Friday, then the health department, there's a delay sometimes in them getting back to us. But we have a process to mitigate it, so they got back to us, which they did. Karen finally was able to talk to them. And pretty much, we were doing the things that were already in place. But we usually, based on the plan, have to defer to some of their recommendations with regards to the contact tracing. We ultimately end up being a part of the contact tracing. So we, that's an extra piece of work for our health nurses that they are participating in and HR. So it's added another layer of work on that they have to participate in. And then another one is, again, recommendations of what happens in a particular case. You mentioned Council Rock, what happened today. This chart, I suspect, is what he followed in making the decision, when you have so many cases, what you should do to try to mitigate it, the situation. You know, you know, our goal is to move forward towards total reopen. And this is the next step to trying to get there and do it in a safe manner. You know, so what we would suggest is that we would continue, as at the board, you know, know that we, in the community, that we will keep updating the dashboard as numbers change, what's happening with those metrics. We also, with COVID cases, to be transparent, board has seen some of our communication letters, that should we have a potential contact or a positive contact, how we're going to communicate. We don't want anyone to think we're keeping secrets. One of the things that came up with regards to what happened in one of our schools earlier this week, we did immediately allow people to go to virtual while we were waiting to hear back from the health department. So there was a delay, and then it literally went out, and some people were concerned, like, why didn't they get told orally? Well, we were waiting to get some other communication from our health officials before we sent the communication. But out of abundance of caution, when this principal says, we can function with these people going virtually, then we just do that for the health and wellbeing. So I want to say that, so people understand that that's always at the top of our list of trying to make sure we try to keep people safe. But we do try to coordinate and collaborate with our health department in making decisions in this process. We want to provide the board with, you'll see the dashboard, but, you know, I think in each meeting, that should be an update that is given to say, what does that look like? Or if we need to tweak the metrics that we're using, based on any new information that comes out.
It may be, but can that dashboard, is that something that's on the website or available on the website updated? Yeah, you're nodding your head at me.
Yes, it is. It's a big screen on the front, and then you can also click on a link, and it'll take you straight to a page that has more information, definitions to explain.
I usually go straight to the agendas on, like, I'm not paying that.
It's literally the first thing you see when you go to Centennial's website.
Is, once you visit a website 100 times, you know where you're going.
So obviously, we hit those metrics. One of the reasons why you have the metrics, that we really don't have to, if the board adopts them, if we hit those metrics, then you're authorized to go ahead and start pushing to go full virtual. So that third bullet is saying, hey, if you hit these targets, you don't need to wait for us. Start the process for planning to go, excuse me, full open. That said virtual, pardon. So that we wanted to have some defined understanding that I have the authority to go ahead and move forward with the team to move full open when we hit those metrics and not wait to start the process. You know, if it, if today was, say we had those numbers and they matched up, I don't think we want to wait two weeks for the next board meeting to have to say we're going to start the process. That's wasted two weeks of planning. So the idea is that if those metrics aren't we're going to use, I know that that's how we decide to move between. And then, of course, we inform the board and keep them up to date on what's happening and why we're moving, basically, which is also the reason why we want to make sure that we give you, make sure you understand what the data is showing us every time we have a board meeting. And so you don't have to say, I need to go look. We will give that to you every two weeks at the meetings, or whenever the meeting is. Because there's one month, there's only one meeting. Our targeted goal for the phase for total reopen is, obviously, if the targets and the metrics are met, we're targeting November 30th, hopefully. Obviously, if things don't match up, we can't do that, but that's a target. Should we hit that target with elementary school, then the next phase would be the 14th for our middle school. And that's based on talking to the team about the planning and preparation process. And then also, then January 11th, which lined up well, I think, with semester or something like that. So it was that academic piece, as well as enough planning time in between to see how things are currently still going. You know, do we have any spiking or anything? So it's enough time to get actual data to see if we're still in a healthy place.
One quick question here. The target dates, are they basically most optimistic, or is there even a little wiggle room that if the target, if we, if the unexpected happens on the good side, and the numbers justify it, any chance of doing it slightly sooner? Or is this about the best we could do?
Well, from talking to what Senator Principal said to me, is they wanted to, because of staff notice, and also really go ahead, because we had talked to that model, but they're like, it may be better if, that if our staff already knows this is the plan of moving towards it. But if we move it, we still get into flipping and changing, and how much time that there's going to take. So I would never say never, that if it gets better. But they did share with me that being declared and actually having specific target dates made it easier for planning for parents and our staff.
Yeah, I think that's fine. It's fine. It's just a question.
And again, you know, we're not going to fit a square peg in a circle, just to say we got something to happen. It's trying to look at, again, optimal teaching and learning environment coupled with being safe in our circumstances. You know, I was asked today, kind of what happened at Council Rock. Did it make me feel like what we're recommending we shouldn't? And as I told the person in the media, again, our numbers, you know, you're going to have cases, but our numbers say we're okay right now with the model we're recommending. So if I'm going to claim data and metrics to make the decision to go forward, I got to follow them and not just react emotional because of what happened and pull back. I got to be consistent in the approach that we're using and we're communicating how we're making the decision to the board, so they know, well, where did you get that from? And this is, again, the team looked at the metrics and agreed, these are good metrics. You know, and hopefully, the goal is later in the agenda is that, you know, for the board to authorize us to move forward, and then make the change to health and safety plan. Because if you do do this, we have to update health and safety plan, send it to the state. They don't have to approve it. They just have to have the latest version. And we can move based on what we do sign locally. And then we have to post a new one on the website to be in compliance.
Mr. Miller had a question that I postponed earlier, so I'm going to give Mr. Miller the floor there. You need to turn.
Rather than risk launching a whole new round of questions, we've got a lot of real estate left on the agenda. So instead, I think I will just ask Dr. Best, having seen these proposed dates, and knowing that he's got black days and white days planned, has he already slid this in there for having black and white nights?
Mr. Miller, what are you trying to do to me? We are meeting with our student leadership group around all events, as you heard tonight. In our, in Logan Merritt's presentation, she talked about the fact that the students have already voted to postpone Powderpuff until the spring in the hopes that we're able to run the event. We're traditionally, we're working on the homecoming process right now. And yes, black and white will also be, will be discussed. But I want to wait until we have greater information to make a decision about that.
I thought you already broke up the teams. Cohort black and cohort white.
Yes, yes, that is, we use the alphabet breakdown that we've used for 56 years for black and white, because it seems to work.
Mrs. Crossen, and then Mrs. Islandberg.
How is the bus, the bus system going to be working? Is it going to be the same routes that we originally had? Is that how we're going to continue?
Do we need Mr. Wardenby for that? And in that case, should we, can I go to Mrs. Islandberg for a second while you get yourself back? Or Robert, you ready? Yeah, okay, go ahead. Never mind, never mind. Go for it.
So busing is going to be exactly the same. Exactly the same thing. Have given us our A and B list.
Yeah, can everybody mute themselves for one thing?
Okay. So the routing is going to be based on what the building principals gave us in their A cohorts and B cohorts. For lack of better words, A through L, M through Z, and we're developing the routing schedules that way. So the routes are the routes. With the A, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, it's actually relatively easy. Half the students per se, and what we're also seeing, since this might come up, a 72-passenger bus, two students per seat, it's about 50 kids on a bus. We're seeing approximately, based on what we're seeing with the parochial schools, the non-pubs that we're transporting, we're seeing about two-thirds of that. So there's 50, maybe 33 kids. So the bus volume, the number of students on the bus, is actually very attainable. And I think some of my colleagues already said that at the other schools that have virtual, have hybrid, the kids are wearing a mask. We've had no problem with kids wearing masks on bus. They've actually been very respectful. Our bus drivers are reporting minimal, hey, Michael, put on your mask. So it's actually been pretty good. But in terms of the routing, it's actually pretty simple still.
Mrs. Islandberg, then Mrs. Brunkott. Mrs. Islandberg, you got to unmute yourself. Oh, volume on your microphone?
That better? Mr. Wardenby, this concern came up previously. Two kids to a seat is still not what, the social distancing we've been, so I'm very curious as to why this is not an issue now. Also, for the younger children, for elementary school children who, you know, have a tough time staying seated and not engaging with the folk, the kids sitting alongside of them, are we going to have somebody on the bus that's going to help out with those younger children? Has that been an issue with the, with the busing to this day at all? I mean, I find it hard to believe that they're not, they're not having, the bus driver be a bit distracted with kids, you know, engaging with one another.
I'm going to answer this question in two parts. I'm going to start with the second part, because we do have experience, again, of transfer, transporting the non-pubs, which is a K through 12 environment. And to the best of my knowledge, in talking to Mr. Bolden, as well as the staff, we have not had an issue with students. So that's a good thing. They're very orderly. They do comply, and they do listen. And I think they've been, it's been drilled into them for the last eight months that this is real. And they're acting as such. The bus drivers are likewise wearing their masks. So we're not having an issue with that. Going to the Going to the per, to per seat, again, with the seats directly behind the driver unoccupied, both left and right. Uh, that has been common practice. Well, it's been requested by not only Dr. uh, Damsker from Bucks County, also in reality by everybody else. I did ask our colleagues across other districts in Bucks County, what they're doing. They're all doing the same thing. From an economic perspective, it's unsustainable, right? We wouldn't be able to uh, do multiple runs, get to school on time, as well as pay for additional buses and additional drive. In terms of athletes on a bus, we've, again, we've been very. Uh, that the kids.
Now we're experienced.
Mr. Whartonby, I, I think you're uh.
Somebody put their mic back on. No, that was done.
Well, uh, I'm not sure, it sounded like it was breaking up a little bit at the end on mine, but I think that to summarize the end of your last point is that the economic reality is that trying to do one kid per seat per bus is not economically viable uh, because of the number of buses frankly, and the number of drivers and et cetera. Uh, Mrs. Brancato.
That was one of my questions um, that Mrs. Islandberg already asked, because I don't see how we think. How do, how do we think that there's not going to be an exchange of germs sitting on the bus?
Well, let me answer that again, once my computer lights back up. So upon entering the bus, we have a hand sanitizer station. So that's one. Secondly, we expect our parents to self evaluate their students before getting on the bus. Make sure they do not have any symptoms. And Mrs. Pressler, our head nurse, put the COVID five out there for the community review. Uh, upon disembarking the bus, the kids can take another dab of hand sanitizer. Uh, at the end of each run, meaning when the bus gets back to the yard, we are bio blasting it or electrostatic spraying it with disinfectant and uh, sanitizing agent. So the buses are getting sanitized. Again, when you go pick them up in the afternoon at the end of that route, I mean, kids are doing the same thing. They're putting their hand sanitizer on as they get on and as they get off. And also in the evening, we are bio blasting the buses again. The other thing that we're doing in terms of keeping it orderly, which is very important, we're going to be loading the buses back to front and disembarking front to back. So the passing of kids is going to be uh, controlled as well. Additionally, and I think we talked about it a little bit here, we're trying to keep families together, like in the classrooms and the cohorts and everything. Likewise, if there's siblings on the same bus, we're encouraging them to sit together too, because they're already in their house together. They're going to be on the bus together. They're going to be in the classroom possibly together.
Mr. Panofsky and then Mr. Godikson.
Wait, wait, wait a second. So, so, so Mr. Whartonby.
Go ahead.
No, you go right ahead.
I think I mentioned this, that there's about, you know, on average, a bus could fit 50 people and we're seeing about 33. So about two thirds, there's two thirds ridership at half even. So there are parents opting to drop their kids off. Other issue, you know, with cars queuing in the street and getting to school and stuff like that, but we have that mitigated as well. But there is less people on the bus too. And we are finding that out by experience, by just transporting the non pubs right now and MBIT. Obviously the middle school kids for sports. So we are seeing that people are taking the opportunity to transport themselves. So that's good too. That lessens the burden on the bus.
So I, so I do understand that there's going to be less kids that actually get on the bus, but we can't predict that because it may change on a daily basis. I just think having two kids next to each other, even though you have all those precautions, if, if I'm John's friend and we haven't seen each other, we're high fiving, we're sitting next to each other. We're, you know, doing this. That's what kids do.
And Ms. Brancato, that will happen in the schools. That will happen outside the schools.
You're right.
For things.
But in, but in the schools, we're saying you have to stay six feet apart, but we're on the bus, it's okay. That's, that just doesn't make sense to me. Because there's, there's, kids are on a bus for the, what, 30 minutes, some of them? They're wiping their nose with the back of their hand, then they're rubbing it down here, you know? I understand kids are going to, kids are being taught what to do at home and I think parents are being great about it. But come on, if John and I are sitting right next to each other.
Mr. Mr. Sorry, can you define cost prohibitive?
Four million dollars.
Four million dollars.
Why would it cost, can you explain why it would cost an additional $4 million to make sure that there was only one kid per seat per bus?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to clarify that statement a little bit further. If we were to transport all our kids at two seats, there's about 650 students that we can't transport. That equates to 26 buses and 26 additional drivers and a number of ages. So that number, that aggregate altogether is over $4 million.
Where, where couldn't you just do two runs per, per route?
We don't have the buses, we don't have the staff, and that's going to disrupt the start and end of school.
Mr. Panofsky.
So um, general comments about the plans, um, rather than specific questions, should those wait until we get to the item on the agenda or?
Why don't we, Mr. Godikson, I'll, I'll come back around. Okay, did you have a specific question, Mr. Godikson, about something presented?
Well, uh, Mr. Whartonby, actually I answered half of the question. The other half is, are we going to load and offload students at the schools, one at, one bus at a time?
One bus at a time? Truthfully, we didn't discuss that uh, option, but that would work. Cause uh, I know at the middle schools, we kind of do that, just to control the volume going into the front door. So that, that could work. It is a timing issue, meaning it has to be, has to be very fluid, but not too quick. And I believe we could do that with uh, some level of insurance. And once they get off the bus, kind of maintain that six foot distance. It's going to take a little bit of vocal influence, if you will, but probably it could happen, Mr. Godikson.
Just a thought.
Uh, please.
All right. So if I can speak to that from the middle school perspective for just a moment, as we are transporting the middle school athletes in for practices. Uh, first I can say I'm very proud of our students because they seem to have learned the new reality. And while they are on the bus, they are wearing their masks and they are behaving really well and sitting separately, so.
Middle school students, you don't say.
Middle school students are, it, it's, it's actually quite strange to see that that's what's, what is going on. But I'm very proud of them because they do recognize that things are different now. And we do have two buses that, that come to our middle schools each day with our athletes. And uh, that model, uh, Mr. Godikson is exactly what we're doing. So we have one bus pull up, that bus unloads, we have the students separated on the field. And then uh, once we have them unloaded, then the next bus unload. So we do have a quite orderly process for it and our students are, are going right along with the plan.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, would it help at all at the high school if we uh, have students parking? Do we have a plan for parking permits?
Yes, so uh, what we're going to do is assign, um, and I can't recall which cohort's getting odd in even numbered spots, but we're just going to alternate the spots. So if you're in, if whichever uh, cohort you're in, there will not be a car parked on either side of you.
Are there any more specific type questions of that sort? I would like to say before Mr. Panofsky, I'll, I'll give you the floor. Uh, and, and this is not to say anything about the previous presentation that we did, but this is the best presentation I can ever remember seeing, I feel like, really. Excellent job all around. So clearly everybody was. I don't know. Uh, I was getting a lot of feedback. I can hear myself. Can somebody mute? Hello? Sorry, uh, I don't know if um, if you guys all felt that way, but just from, from where I'm sitting, it looked like everybody had their, their piece to say, everybody felt, you know, it, it was just a very impressive and very thorough presentation. I really thank everybody uh, for the thoroughness of it. Um, so having said that, Mr. Panofsky, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, so firstly, it, I don't know if people at home can see how we're actually set up in the room, but for me as someone who's been in front of a class, this is like bringing flashbacks because we're all at the board table and the administration and principals are sitting in front of us at desks. Like we're teaching and they're a class, so that's bringing back memories for me. Um, I want to thank everybody for all the work that they have done putting this plan in. Mr. Dixon is correct, this is a phenomenal plan. It is wonderfully thought out. It is well put together. I find myself in a weird situation because I, I don't think we should be going back and I have made that clear. Um, I personally just went through a situation where there was a possibility that I was exposed to COVID and it was scary. That being said, I have to keep in mind the fact that we saw the survey results that 77% say we should be going back and I, I understand that I am elected by the people and that I am listening to the people. I am scared, unlike what Dr. Dr. Bedden is more focused on the data and I appreciate that. I am scared by what has happened in Council Rock where they have been back for two weeks and then had to close a school. Right now, and I ha- I have said publicly that even though I publicly, I personally think we shouldn't be going back, I'm leaning towards approving this plan. I'm still there. I just, I'm just worried. I'm just scared that we're going to have some kind of outbreak. And I know we have these things in plan and we have these plans in place. It's, it's, I'm still just unsettled because cases are spiking, so that's, that's what I kind of wanted to say.
Um, Dr. Bedden, and then um, I'll go around over here.
No, you're muted.
Can you hear me now? Um, one of the things that as a superintendent, you, you don't have the luxury of always um, allowing your personal feelings to play out. Um, so I go home every day uh, to honestly a 15 year old daughter who's worried uh, consistently. Um, in fact, I just recently got tested myself because of what just happened, because of being in the building and interacting with staff that we had to quarantine. Uh, so I often wonder, what am I exposing my child to? Uh, that being said, I have to stick with, if I'm going to use the science uh, to defend virtual, then I need to stick with the science to make the decision going forward and put aside how I may feel personally. And I appreciate uh, Mr. Panofsky's uh, comment about listening to the community. Uh, and in fact, uh, I'm flooded, I can't keep over the emails. Uh, I get both sides, uh, people who are for it and people who are uh, concerned and don't want to come back. And so part of the challenge that we did as a team was try to figure out again, how to find that optimal opportunity to balance both and then try to create a model that gave flexibility uh, that Miss Crossen asked that question about a parent or a child who has something. And then we had to factor in, what are we putting our teachers through? Because at the end of the day, we also have to give a service. And I get that. I have, I walk into the grocery store and I see those people giving a service uh, every day. Uh, and I use myself and they make clearly less than I do, but they still go. And, and we'd be in trouble if they didn't give the service. Uh, so but I also want to make sure that we're giving a service in as a safer model as possible. And I absolutely am concerned. I am a proponent of uh, the castle model for social emotional learning. We did a lot of work in my last district on social emotional learning. Um, so I get the, the, the understanding. I deal with my own child at home every day. Um, with regards to some of her frustration. Uh, I am, for those who don't know it, uh, a parent of a special needs child who's finally graduated. I'm a parent of the gifted student. And I still have a, uh, at this point, it's my third uh, child in school. So I absolutely every day look at also what would I expect of me? If it was my child, meaning the superintendent, sitting there, and that's the lens I, I take. And I want to say to our teachers who are watching, who are concerned, and I know you are, it is not my position to judge, but I also have to make sure that I'm being responsible to both sides. Staff and faculty, but also our constituents. Uh, taxpayers are paying, uh, we have to try to deliver service in a safe model. And I think this is what the team tried to do, and I will absolutely tell you, some, an incident is going to happen. Every scientific person I talk to says that, that's not what we're saying. But we're going to do our part to try to make sure everyone is as safe as possible. Um, and still try to give the best education we can, given the circumstances. But I do want to go on record to any legislators that are sitting, looking or who will see this, then don't tell me when you say now that schools need to be open, public schools with children sitting in front of them, that you won't hold cyber charters accountable for performance when you say in person is important. If it's important now, it should be important then. That you don't funnel money to underperforming cyber, because I don't have a problem with a school that's performing. It's the underperforming ones, if you're going to make the argument that in person, which I think is still always the best place for our children to be. But we gotta be fair in the process and make sure we are equipped to do the job that we can. I want to thank everyone sitting out there and those who couldn't make it tonight. They put a lot of hours in, uh, 11 o'clock conversations, 6 AM phone calls. They keep asking me, do I sleep? Uh, uh, I squeeze it in somewhere, but I do want to thank you all for the hard work, no matter what happens here tonight. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Panofsky, I started out where you were. Uh, and I didn't uh, change my opinion at all. Uh, Dr. Ben, I still have a student in, in school, or a child in school. Uh, I had three criteria from the beginning. Two of them have been satisfactorily addressed to me this evening. The first being that for any family that does not want to return to school, they will have a fully acceptable virtual alternative, and you've addressed that. Uh, my second criteria was that our faculty and staff, particularly because my child in school is a teacher in the Abington School District, uh, and I still have the same feelings. Uh, that we've covered being fully staffed with teachers that are willing to work voluntarily. Uh, the third one, uh, I addressed it at uh, an impromptu meeting we had. And even though you already possess the authority under the school code, uh, before we end this evening, I want to make sure that it is embedded in our health and safety plan that without any reservation whatsoever by this board, you have the unmitigated authority to close a school or the district if you determine that the metrics tell us that's what we have to do.
Uh, Mr. Martin.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Martin. Uh, I haven't said anything all evening. Um, and I just want to uh, counter to what Mr. Panofsky said. I've continued to support full reopening. I think this plan was well thought out and presented, as you said. And because it included a tentative time to go to full opening, I, I certainly can support this as an interim step. However, I think it's fair to say that none of us in this board are medical doctors. Uh, the county health director, Dr. David Damsker, is a well-respected public health expert. As recently as Sunday, in the, I happen to get the Courier Times, but probably the Intelligencer as well. But Dr. Damsker continues to emphasize that in-person instruction, including full time, is safe as long as schools closely follow their health and safety plans. He goes on at the end of the article, uh, which I won't read really, but Dr. Damsker said the state recommends. He goes on at the end of the article, which I won't read really, but Dr. Damsker said the state recommendations are issued in the summer are not a truly scientific method of determining whether in-classroom learning is safe. The metrics are simply another set of guidelines put out by the state to assist in overall decision-making. We don't believe these should be used as absolute standards or as a specific reason not to open schools since there is no evidence-based data to back them up. And it goes on. So I'm appreciative of this interim step, but I want to hopefully get to a full opening as this plan includes so that people can get back to school. The vast majority of emails and contacts that I've had may be different than others. Support the idea of returning to school full-time. Have had some others, but the vast majority, the survey indicates it, want the kids back at school. And last point, I think, I baby, not babysit, I watch my grandkids and I watch what happens. When I come home from school, they go out and they play with their friends. So the idea that they have to sit, they weren't to just open a wonderful new playground. It just opened this past weekend. Kids were there sliding down sliding boards, doing things kids do. They don't stay, they don't live in a bubble. And I think we have to be realistic when we talk about how many kids could go on a bus and this and that. Just be realistic, but I have Dr. Damsker, I would rely on for any decisions or information that I would need to get. He is well-certified and well-respected. Thank you very much for the time.
I think I appreciate the fact, you know, with what you said, Mr. Martin, there just in general terms of support for a plan that does lay out a process by which we do move towards full, full opening. Dr. Ben, do you want to say anything about any specific element of that or? Nope, that's fine. I was just joking. I basically agree. I mean, listen, you know, I think the only thing I would say is that it's not just a question, you know, to Dr. Damsker's point. There is safe, of course, that's primary, but there's also safe plus logistics. And the combination of those two things dictates some of how, you know, the process and the speed at which we can do it. Mr. Panoski?
Actually, I actually thought of a specific question while I was listening. Ventilation systems in our schools, have they been tested? Have we had an engineering firm do a walkthrough? Are they at the level that they're supposed to be at for safe ventilation? Because what Mr. Martin said actually made me think the big difference is when the kids are outdoors, they're outdoors. They're not in a room. So are ventilation systems safe for the kids?
Mute your cells because with Mr. Wartenby's.
Okay, Mr. Panoski, again, very good questions tonight. So part of my day today was gathering information. And I'm going to share this with the board. Our oldest HVAC system is nine years old at the high school. Our newest HVAC systems are at our two oldest schools. So they're two years old at Cleaner and Log. A well-maintained HVAC system in a commercial setting, which we are. It has life expectancy of about 20 to 30 years, as long as it's well-maintained. And I do know our staff does maintain those things daily because it is a type of system that needs maintenance daily. The air exchange, everybody talks about how many times does the air exchange in the building? Every hour it's about nine air exchanges. So in an eight-hour cycle, which is when kids and staff are in a building, it's about 72 air exchanges. So it's pretty good. We're bringing in about 25% to 35, 30% fresh air. So with air conditioning systems that are commercial, what you're doing is bringing outside air in. You're conditioning that air. So if you're doing heat and you're bringing outside air in, you're heating up the air. If it's moist outside and you're doing heat or air conditioning, you're drying the air. Obviously during the summer, you're, and it's a very hot day, you're trying not to bring in that hot air because it takes that much extra to cool it down. So our systems are very good. People ask questions about HEPA systems. You actually have to have a system that can allow a HEPA system. For instance, and this is how I'm going to explain it. This blue mask is much easier to breathe through than yours, Mr. Panoski, because it's thinner. It's a filtered paper. Yours probably has a tie, a tighter weave or more thread count. So think of that with the HEPA filter too. So you need a robust system that can draw the air through a HEPA filter. So that's another thing. With half the students in the school, you're actually going to have more outside air volume because people are expending less air. There's been a lot of questions about opening windows and I understand the frustration with that because four of our buildings, which are new buildings, have operable windows. Why not open a window? But then all your air conditioning, and I'm sure you heard this, hey, shut the door because we're not heating the outside or we're not cooling the outside. There's truth to that. Also, you open a window, you lose the benefit of filtering the air. So there's outside influences coming in. Kids with allergies, if you have kids with allergies, do I know if it's COVID or allergies? Right? So there's a lot of things that going on. So to your point, Mr. Panoski, me understanding our systems, have I had an engineer in the last couple of weeks do it? Within the last two years, yes, we have. So we know what our systems are. Did I reach out to our engineers yesterday to get some data? I sure certainly did. And this is what they came up with. And this is what I came up with too, based on my experience. Great question though.
Yeah, Mr. Wartenby, would you add to that? The makeup of the climate control systems in the elementary schools? Up in those pointed rooms where we have the individual unit per classroom?
Right. And then we all, exactly as Mr. Miller said, individual units per classrooms too, and at the high school level too. So we have a lot of redundancies and we've, Mr. Greenwood and I are spending money on filters. You would never think that, you know, how many filters can you buy? Well, if you exchange them frequently, you're buying a lot of filters. And to Mr. Miller's point, I mean, if each unit, if each classroom has its own unit, has its own filter. So there's quite a bit of things that we're doing to mitigate particulates in the air and so forth.
As a time check, it's about 9:25 and we still have the rest of the agenda to go through. So we've had the full presentation. Are there any other general comments about it at this time? Mrs. Brancato?
So, Dr. Bedden, I need you to, or somebody to address the fact, you know, I like your plan, but we do represent the people in this community and there are a lot of parents that want to just stay home full-time, which this will accommodate for them. But there's a lot of parents that want to go back full-time. Now, whether I agree with that or don't agree with that, there are a lot of parents that want that. And I see you have it planned, but planned for January for the high school kids? Is there any way to move those dates up? Because for the younger kids, a lot of the parents can't afford to be home much longer. I'm babysitting other people's kids and they're not my friends. Because this lady couldn't go back to work unless I did that for her. And I'm sure other people are lending a hand. I know I'm not the only one. But my question is, is there any hope of moving those dates up? Because I would love to vote yes for your idea, but I need you to move those dates up. Like I need you to be more promising.
So I'll start with saying that it's not my idea. It's a team, as was pointed out. So it's not an individual person who developed this.
Now, I understand that it's not.
And the answer to your question is, based on the information that I have in front of me and based on the information provided by multiple data points, multiple reports, not to conflict directly with Mr. Martin, but Regional Educational Lab is a well-regarded organization. And they did research. Now, whether it's valid or not, I don't get to decide that. But I'm not going to cherry pick when it's convenient for someone who has been around a long time. Our team has looked at CHOP reports. Our team has looked at Dr. Damsker's report. Our team has looked at American Pediatrics Association reports, Pennsylvania Department of Ed and Pennsylvania Department of Health. And the totality of the majority of that information says that this is a plan. The timeline was developed also with consideration for making sure we have data that can happen. Now, with that said, is it possible? First of all, the board can choose to vote to go five-day. This is just a recommendation. If that's what the board, like some boards have done, you all could choose to decide to do that. And if there are five of you, then we will build a plan to do that. In fact, it makes our life easier for planning. This is actually harder to try to do this split model for us administratively to come up with a plan. If things continue to progress, I will always be committed to try to look at and see if there's a way to get our kids into full reopen as soon as possible. But I also will always consult the team and tell me, what's the timeline to make it happen? That was the conversation. That's how I came up with the 10 to 14 day. They gave me input on like, if we can go full reopen earlier, what's the transition time? And I think Mr., I've drawn a blank here. Said, I think you said the comment, I think Mr. Dixon said it, but that the operational piece is also a factor. That's why the secondary measure is our staffing and operational capacity to make it happen. And, you know, but I also know that I pressed a team for a concrete deliverable date that we need to target. Because also, just like when we talked about October 19th, that was a target date because I needed team to understand that we had to have a back mapping plan to say this is our goal. We did the same thing with those dates and what they believe was reasonable and also what they felt like that they could actually get accomplished. One of the things I don't want people to do is to feel like you have a superintendent who will say something because it's popular or make a promise that we can't deliver on because I value my credibility. If I don't deliver on something, I want people to know that it was a mistake or there was a capacity issue and that my intent is always pure. One of the things I pride myself on is people say that when he says something, he really tries to do what he says. And that's, you know, that's just big for me personally and professionally. And so, and that's the best I can tell you, but I will, I can tell you that if something presents itself that we should be considering it, I will absolutely broach the conversation with the team about, can we expedite? November night, the data showed that we could not, didn't have to wait till November 9th. And so that's when I came on and looked at the team and said, hey, we're not, do we stay for November 9th just because we put it on paper? When we know that the intent of everything in health and safety plan actually says in it, even from the state, your goal is to try to get to full reopen in a safe and orderly manner. So we felt like we didn't have to wait till November 9th. I will tell you, I approached this the same way, without telling you something just to sound good. And then you feel like I pie in the sky to you. I don't want to do that.
All right. Mrs. Crosson, go ahead.
I have to say that I would like to see five days, have our kids come back five days. I want to, I want to be able to offer what all parents need. I want to be able to offer the virtual for them and then the in-person. And it's, it's a fabulous idea that we're having the teacher being able to teach at home and in the classroom at the same time. I would really like to see us be able to do the full five days for the kids, if that's possible, if we, if we're able to do it. I mean, if not, I understand this plan is, is very well done. And to move us forward, of course, I'm going to agree, but I would like to see the kids back as soon as possible, as soon as, you know, with safety concerns and taken into consideration. But I really do think they need to be back five days a week.
I mean, go ahead.
Part of what I believe, a couple of things will flesh out too, I think, as we go through this process. One of the logistical issues, staffing capacity will become clear also. So part of the issue with, for example, the five-day is, do you, like the high school would have a challenge that once we know who's there and who's not, certification is a big factor. The same thing with middle school, that do you have the actual people? So just because the teacher is out, is it the teacher that we actually can deliver the service with? So if a child has to have chemistry, I'm just using it because everyone can relate to that one. Will we actually be able to provide them a chemistry teacher? So that's part of what they kind of alluded to with the example of what Mr. Gabriel talked about. It's not as simple as when we, they looked at the model earlier of trying to do that, what you're saying. But I think it will become clearer with some of the, the dates that we've established and the people having to declare where they are. Right now, I'm concerned with the number 72, but that doesn't mean all of them are going to be that we got 53 that are sitting there. And I think as Ms. Bolden and others have said, this decision tonight will probably add some more clarity too. I do know talking with staff, even our, our support staff, that I've heard some of them, some have mixed feelings. We absolutely have a mixed feeling group even internally about working. And once we keep moving, I'm hoping knowing that they see the date, they know it's coming. To that, I add more clarity too, because I heard, they heard tonight that our goal is to try to get back to as close as possible norm. Because reality, personally, now I'll make a personal comment here to step outside my role. This is going to be potentially a, around for a while and we got to figure out how to make it work is, is within as best we can. And I'm hoping sooner rather than later, we've become better and how do we address the medical issues with it? But it's not going to go away real fast. I am worried about what they're talking about now with the other season that we're approaching that may cloud the issue a little bit more with flu and other things that people will misrepresent that as being COVID and stuff like that that we're going to have to deal with. But I don't disagree with you.
Point of order. If we're going to get into this deeper discussion, perhaps Mrs. Crosson should introduce the resolution?
Well, we still have to, why don't we, before we start introducing resolutions, can I suggest that we have community comments to get through on this and the rest of an agenda? You know, and then we can think about, it's not that it's not a bad idea, but it's already 9:35 and we have not gotten to the community comments yet, so.
And we have a board policy that we don't start another item until 10, after 10:00 PM.
Right. This is why we got to move it. I do want to say.
Sorry, should we suspend that policy for the evening because?
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah, can I, can I make a motion to suspend the policy?
Sure you can. You did. Do you have a second?
I would second that.
All right. All those in favor of the emotion now on the table to suspend the board policy that prevents us from conducting new business after 10 o'clock, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I was an aye, by the way. What was? I guess that makes it 8-1 miserable. Is there any abstentions?
And I do that grudgingly, by the way.
I will say one last thing on this before we get to the community comments and that is this. You know, in reference to what Mr. Martin talked about, yeah, I mean, I think it's closer than you'd think in terms of, you know, I think if you were just looking at this from the outside and looking at survey results and things like that, you would think that if you looked in my inbox, you would see an overwhelming number of people asking that we reopen five days versus stay closed. But actually it's, I would say it's like more like 60, 40, you know, something like that. And I will say the thing that I struggle with on the opening five days or staying virtual and in general, is that it seems to me that always the same people, no matter which way you slice it, are the people who get the brunt of it. And that's the people who are already on the economic, you know, are economically struggling on, on our lower income families or families with one working parent, things like that. Because, you know, if you, if you look at what the disease does and the statistics on the disease, like most other things, the disease disproportionately affects lower-income people, not because of genetics or anything, but because of, you know, access to healthcare. The disease is often a disease of the elderly and poorer families or families with less money are more likely to be living with older relatives or have more people in their household, you know, sharing a space. So there's more time, you know, chances for transmission. So if you open up five days and say, well, everybody's got to get it sometime, you're looking at a reality where the likelihood is that the people on the lower half of the economic scale are the most likely to be impacted. On the other hand, it's those very same people who most need these schools open. You know, because it's them who lose the jobs that aren't something that you can do from the comfort of your home office. Right? And so that's really, really tough. And it's still not fun at this stage of the game for all of us. The other thing I would just say in, you know, totality to the comments we've had tonight is that if you are a staff member or a teacher in this district, please don't feel like you can't reach out. is that uh if you are a staff member or a teacher in this district, please don't feel like you can't reach out uh and get help and get answers. It's just that there are, you know, if you're a teacher, you have the C E A. I have a very good relationship with Mrs. Steck myself. I know Mrs. Steck and the C E A leadership have a good relationship uh with the district uh administration. There are ways to get the answers that go through official channels and get them to the places where they need to be so they can be answered correctly in a productive fashion. The reason why we suggest maybe not going to individual board members is because ultimately for me to give you the right answer, I gotta ask him anyway. And same with any of the rest of us, if we're gonna give you the right answer. Uh, so it's not about trying to restrict who you can talk to, but being efficient about how we communicate helps to prevent the spread of rumor and misinformation and helps you to get you the right information as quickly and as efficiently as possible. And that's really the only concern. Having said all that, can we move to community comments now, please?
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, just like to thank everybody for their uh participation and patience in this meeting. Um, for this meeting, we are allowing um our community members to voice their own comments. Um, that being said, I will be reading the bulk of the comments, but we do have uh two people who have been waiting, so we're gonna let them um go first. So first up, I'm going to bring in Lisa Higgins. And Lisa, if you could turn on your microphone and if you could just state your name and address and then you are welcome to give your comment. Thank you.
Okay, hi, um, Lisa Higgins, two oh one Florence. Um, I had a couple of questions that I had emailed earlier.
I'm mistaken, it's just just to, I'm just gonna say one thing to you. Uh, we're going to th- three minutes roughly. I'll give you when you have about fifteen seconds left. And just try to keep it to around three minutes. Go ahead.
All right, you got it. Um, so one of the questions was is, and it was kind of touched on it was, what does the school district plan to do to help the financial burden of parents that pay taxes like to have their kids? Since so many parents had to quit their jobs.
Um, okay, we've got that question. Why don't you ask all your questions and then we can handle them?
Okay, uh, one of the things I was concerned about was what are you doing for the mental health of the teachers? I would imagine doing the hybrid would be taxing on them, trying to work the computer as well as um maintain the students. Like I could only imagine how much stress and anxiety that would be. Uh, sorry, I'm just grabbing my notes here. Um, so uh how would you guys distinguish viruses, uh, other viruses from COVID? Are your staff going to know all the minimums? Uh, what do you call it, like symptoms of it? Um, well, they have to get tested for COVID at every time. Um, one of the things you guys had kind of quickly went through was for the elementary students when they're or at home, is the school day longer than what they're currently doing with virtual? Uh, and if one sibling is quarantined, do the others have to stay home as well? Uh, see if the majority of the cohort options for virtual, uh, it's students want to stay virtual and the resting amount of students are like half that wanna be in school. Could that particular class go the four days? Um, let's see here. And then for the school buses, if you're going to load from back to front, usually you guys used to have like the kindergartners in the front and like the fifth graders in the back. How will that be affected? Like what if a kindergarten was picked up first, they're gonna be in the back of the bus? And then what if you picked up a fifth grader? What would you do about the bullying? See, what else did I have here? Pretty much it. And and as that, those were pretty much it.
Okay, I'm gonna say you you've asked quite a few questions. I don't think that we probably have already answers for every single one of them at this moment. Uh, I will, uh, uh, these, this meeting's being recorded and so we can go back and we can get, Dr. Bedden, you're gonna say something here. Go ahead.
Oh, wait, can I ask one last quick question?
Please, please.
Um, one of the concerns I have, are we gonna sign liability waivers? Because I pay taxes. If someone sues the school district, my taxes go up. Like, are there waivers that will be signed? That no one will sue s- school or sue the school for having COVID and something happened?
Mr. Dixon, the, these are questions, not comments. And I suggested, I think you were headed in that direction, that maybe administration to answer them offline.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Yeah, what I, what I was gonna suggest is, a- as she said, she may have emailed. If she has, I'll look for that uh email, but if Ms. Higgins, if she can hear us, uh, can you email those to me because you did ask for a lot uh of things and I don't, I was trying to write down, I couldn't keep up. So if you've sent it, I'll look for it. If not, can you send that to me so we can get the answers to you?
Also, as I said, the meeting's been recorded, right? So we'll have this, uh, we'll have a permanent record of your question. And someone will get back to you with answers to them, okay?
Yep, she she's still here. She's an attendee. Um, so thank you, Ms. Higgins. All right, um, up next we have Allison Yenna Cone. Uh, I'm allowing her to speak now.
Same rules, uh, Ms. Yenna Cone. Three minutes, I'll give you a fifteen second warning. Um, so try to keep it to around three minutes.
Just, just let us know that you can, uh, we can hear you.
Uh, I have not asked to speak.
Well, thank you, thank you for chiming in.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, first community comment. Uh, Jennifer Stoddard, eleven forty Stratham Drive, Southampton, P A. Let me just start our timer. All right, uh, dear Dr. Bedden and members of the school board, this comment follows a slightly longer letter that I sent to all of you last week and contains much of the same substance. I have a daughter in eighth grade at Klinger, a daughter in fourth grade at Davis, a four-year-old son attending a local daycare and a set to attend Davis next fall. And two stepdaughters attending Valley Elementary School in Ben Salem Township School District. That is five children attending four different schools in two different districts. My husband and I also work full-time. Virtual learning has not been easy for any of us. Privately, I have advocated for return to school full-time for all of our kids. However, like so many parents, we have tried to help all five of our children make the most of these difficult times. I must admit that I live, that I live, I think it was, should be loved, virtual learning. We're working for our kids, whereas the spring was more of a free-for-all. With nearly no live interaction with teachers or classmates, this marking period has been a welcome change. I appreciate the efforts of all the teachers to make each virtual day resemble a normal school day as closely as possible. There is no doubt that our kids have benefited from that approach. However, I am concerned that the next phase apparently being employed by the Centennial School District. While I continue to want our kids to return to in-person learning, the thought that our kids will be transitioning from at least part-time live virtual learning all five days per week to at least two days of completely asynchronous work is unappealing, at best and gravely concerning at worst. Asynchronous learning is not what our kids need. I did not work for our kids, it did not work for our kids in the spring and I do not believe it will work now. My stepdaughters have continued to learn from their Ben Salem teachers in an almost completely asynchronous manner. And the method is a complete disservice to the kids. The daily scheduled and disciplined interactions with teachers and classmates employed by our centennial teachers not only has made the school day feel much more normal for our kids and helped them to absorb their lessons much quicker, but it has offered the added benefit of helping me get through my own workdays from home with fewer distractions and interruptions that necessarily accompany an asynchronous format. I cannot envision a schedule that will permit all the students in a class to keep proper pace when only two or three of the five days a week involve any synchronous learning, with students learning the same lessons in different ways. For example, do we really expect that the students who are learning virtually on a long division day will learn and understand long division as well as the students who are in person that day? Or do we expect the math teacher to teach the same long division lesson twice that week to permit all students to have the benefit of in-person instruction on that topic? If our children attend school in person for two days, watch a live stream with the classroom for two days, participating in the class discussion remotely as possible, and attend school on a fifth day in a manner similar to their current practice, I believe that the best. Okay, that's three minutes.
And I I will say, I believe that these comments are mostly about the old model that was proposed prior to the feedback. What we saw tonight was much more about a synchronous availability of the teachers for the students who are at home during the days that they're at home, right? So hopefully most of that comment was addressed. Okay, so in that case, um, can we move on to the next comment?
Uh, we can. All right, uh, the next comment is from Jane Smith uh, or June Musto at ten fifty-four Toll House Road, Warminster. Uh, right, um, I'm writing this comment on behalf of my daughter who is a teacher in the Centennial School District. Uh, first, although I know I will, it will sound biased, let me know, let me start by saying that my daughter loves her job and gives a hundred percent of her effort to help students succeed. She has even taught the children of two current board members. Since last March, I have never seen her work harder or longer in an effort to provide quality education to her students. Unfortunately, however, I have also seen her agonize over the decision to return to in-person teaching. Like many people, while my daughter is healthy, her father and I are both at high-risk category due to our age as well as other health issues. My daughter is rightly concerned that she, if she contracts COVID nineteen and brings it home to one of us, we may not survive. Over the past week, I have witnessed my daughter attempt to get answers to her valid questions and have her concerns be addressed. She took part in the thought exchange in which in the overwhelming majority of the faculty who participated expressed similar concerns. Here are my questions to you. Number one, has the school board taken the time to actually read the comments and concerns identified by the faculty and staff in our exchange? I'm not referring to the summary of it. The faculty and staff are the ones who will be on the front lines and I believe that as elected officials, it is your duty to read uh each of their thoughts and concerns so they may be taken into account during the decision-making process. Number two, will cleaning supplies be provided to the teachers? Many cannot afford to purchase these out of pocket. Number three, if cleaning supplies are purchased, will they be distributed to the faculty and staff before the students are scheduled to return to school? As you know, many of them are backordered right now and unavailable. Number four, how can teachers give their full attention to teaching students in person while simultaneously helping students learn virtually? I am not a teacher, but I do not believe that this is simple as turning on a webcam. As I have seen the hours of preparation my daughter and I'm sure many other teachers have put into teaching. Number five, even on a staggered schedule, teachers at the high school will come into contact with over a hundred students each week. Many of the classrooms do not have windows that open. Has anything been done to improve ventilation as this is an airborne virus? Number six, finally, as the board has seen national news reports of a recent scientific study that shows that the virus can live on surfaces such as glass, plastic, paper for up to twenty-eight days. Even with the best social distancing plan in place, it seems that it, that this rapid spread of the virus throughout the schools is all but inevitable. As can be seen by the closure of Council Rock North, Saint John Newman and Maria Coretti High Schools. Although with the five confirmed cases at Central Bucks East, yeah, there have been already one hundred twenty-three confirmed cases so far in the Bucks County private and public schools. I'm sure they're following the same social distancing practices that we were putting into place. According to PASH, as of October sixth, five hundred thirty out of eight thousand four hundred fifty-seven Bucks County residents who have caught this highly transmissible virus have died. This is equal to roughly six percent. All right.
Dr. Bedden is going to handle a response to this.
Uh, the cleaning supplies, we have a, an abundance of supplies. We actually have a described teacher kit uh that is already made for each student to receive. Uh, I've been assured uh by our director facilities that we are well stocked up. So we are headed to game and it, and thinking uh ahead of the game. Uh, it will absolutely be uh teaching in person while uh class virtually. Uh, but principals and our our professional learning, why we're doing professional development in advance of this is intended to help develop strategies for our teachers on how to do that. That's why we built so many days in and asking them to come back as soon as possible to work with us to try to assist them in doing that and pair them up. Uh, for example, the high school and then other schools are are uh actually have teachers going through, for lack of a better term, practice dry run sessions uh to do this and to serve as boots on the ground to help support their colleagues and how to get it done. So will it be perfect? I would not even sit here and say that, but we are actually absolutely taking into consideration about the the challenges that teaching uh in-class in person while students are at at home. Uh, that is also from my days as a middle school teacher. Uh, also part that has to happen with the planning and lesson planning and developing how you would do that. Teachers are not expected to be a sage on a stage for the entire time. Uh, they can actually treat, for example, the end class as a group and then the home uh twelve students, just as an example, as a group to do small group instruction to to break time off. So there's ways it can be done. Uh, they issue about air quality, our HVAC system was addressed earlier. Um, and uh they're also with uh the airborne question uh that was addressed earlier too, that we actually are cleaning every day with a night crew um that will be using uh the, the, I forgot official name, name, Robert. Electrostatic uh cleaners every uh night uh to clean our rooms. So I believe a lot of the questions uh have been addressed with some of the presentation earlier and that was a summary.
Um, and again, if you have any specific questions, either the commenter or your relative who is a teacher, your daughter, uh, they should absolutely, you know, get those questions either, you know, to their direct, you know, whichever administrator, whether it's their principals or uh through the union. Get, you know, I assume the union is probably working on collecting questions. If they're not, they will be now because I just said that, uh, you know, and 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 making sure that they're having a conversation with the administration to address concerns, Mrs. Prongato.
Andrew, there's twenty pages of questions in the thought exchange, twenty pages. So it's not that the questions aren't being asked, there's twenty pages.
I I didn't say they weren't.
So the the these teachers have already asked the questions, they've just not been answered yet.
Well, I I'm saying I encourage you to go through, you know, whether it's the thought exchanges or directly to your principals, wherever the answers are available, you know, pursue them. And someone will answer.
Noticing too, as we look at the grouping of the questions, um, a lot of them actually have been given uh in the health and safety plan and other documents. Uh, for example, just like a lot of questions about the lead process, we sent out a safe school return document that literally spelled out in a matrix of how to uh, what that looks like, how much money. Uh, the finance office created a calculator of how to factor in what the financial impact that they work with C E A to try to help people understand it. So my point in saying is that we actually are trying to answer, but they have to help us too by reading the information that we provide them uh to get the answers. So some of those are valid questions that have, that are needing to be addressed. It's some depend on, as you heard earlier, if the plan is approved, then we know how to answer those questions. Others quite often are things that actually already exist that have been shared. And one of the reasons I did that newsletter, tried to summarize a lot of stuff, was because of that. I reset the health and safety plan directly for me when I saw some of the questions. And I did a newsletter directly to the staff and faculty that put a lot of information in one place, trying to be responsive uh to them. Um, uh, H R is getting a, a lot of time one-on-one to support people because some of it, that's what it takes. I mean, you know, that they really want to talk through and and we're trying to do that. So my point is that we are working as fast as we can. But, you know, there's only so many of us with uh literally almost a thousand staff members that potentially exist in a district. So we're trying.
Mr. Panofsky.
Never mind. I'm good.
Uh, Nate, how many more community comments do we have? Just try and keep track here.
Three.
Three, okay, good. Let's continue.
All right, uh, next comment is from Jerika Rogers, eight eighty-five Caph Lane, Warminster. Uh, please share the results of the survey that was recently sent out to the Centennial School District teachers regarding their comfort level of returning to class learning and why it is that they continue to get a choice when the taxpayers have gotten none since the day, since day one, by being forced to do full-time virtual largely due to a staffing shortage. Furthermore, please clarify if the Centennial Education Association is funded by the Democratic National Committee and explain to the community just how much of an impact the teachers' union has had on the reopening of of our schools. I'm looking forward to watching the, uh, okay, that that's it.
Uh, I will say the following things. One, the survey results were released as part of the presentation earlier this evening. Two, although I do not work for the Pennsylvania State Education. Two, although I do not work for the Pennsylvania State Education Association, I once worked for the American Federation of Teachers, and I could tell you that there in no way is any funding coming to either organization from the Democratic Party. Every nickel they ever get, they keep, let me assure you. And unions are funded by members dues. That is the only way they are funded. And three, the union has a role to play here, as the unions do everywhere they are. They have a voice in a process and they have had that voice. And, you know, at the end of the day, it's a collaborative decision that gets made among the board, the administration, with input from staff, the union, the Act 93 representative group, the support staff people, community members like yourself commenting. There's obviously a lot of stakeholders whose interests don't always line up. And we're doing the very, very best we can to try to balance the needs of children, of parents, of taxpayers who don't have children in the district, of our staff, and to do, you know, to deliver safe education to every student in an equal and fair way. And that's that. Next comment.
Next comment. This one's a little bit longer. All right, Melanie Reed, 675 Street Road, Southampton. I first want to acknowledge that this has been a difficult time for everyone financially and emotionally. I have been out of work since March, and I know firsthand how financially it can affect families. I also recognize the importance of children being in school for multiple reasons. But unfortunately, this country, this country has been affected by a virus no one could have ever imagined. We've recently seen an uptick in cases, and it is anticipated to increase in the weeks ahead with flu season approaching. I know Centennial is going to do what they can to put things in place to keep our children safe. But this also falls on the parents to make the best decisions, not only for their children, but for others. Sadly, I do not have a lot of confidence in others thinking about my child as they put theirs on the school bus each morning. Recently, there was a rally held to reopen the schools. Parents fighting for schools to be reopened didn't even have the common sense to wear a mask or social distance. They claim that the sun kills the virus and the children do not spread the virus. How are we supposed to trust the ones who believe that the virus is nothing to worry about? Sorry, the clock stopped. How are we supposed to trust that the ones who believe that the virus is nothing to worry about is going to do the COVID-5 every morning or keep their children home from school if they have any symptoms? The reality is, they send their kids to school sick on Motrin because they can't or just don't want to keep them home. They may be the loudest advocates for schools to reopen, but they are not the majority and do not speak for the majority of the families in the Centennial School District. As we've seen in the past week with multiple districts, there have been positive cases with students and faculty. Central Bucks has positive cases. Council Rock has closed one of the high schools because of positive cases. And the Centennial has positive cases where there have only been a handful of students in the buildings. The Philadelphia School District has just announced that they are closing three schools because of positive cases. Between COVID and now the flu season approaching, the effects can be devastating. Children need to be in schools for their mental health, but it will be more damaging to them or a family member or friend gets sick or dies. It will also affect their mental health when schools need to close abruptly because of positive cases. I would rather my child have a rough day in virtual than have them go through the pain again of losing another family member during this time. Please remember, a life cannot be replaced, and that one life lost is way too many. Please vote to continue with virtual. Thank you.
The plan presented tonight, just to reiterate to this commenter, does include the option for your child to stay home virtual and yet have the ability to see in a synchronous way and experience just basically what they've been experiencing up until now. Their teacher in front of them, teaching instead of from their home, from their classroom, live. So you have that option now, and that was one of the goals of this plan. Oh, Mr. Panofsky, please.
It's Mrs. Reed, was that the name correct? Yes. Okay, so Ms. Reed, given your address, you're actually a neighbor of mine, so hi. I share a lot of your concerns. I agree that the loudest are not always the majority, and I agree that there are parents that will send their kids sick to school. And these are things that I have struggled with, and I understand where you're coming from. As Mr. Dixon said, we have that virtual option, which I think is going to be a great option in the end, which will allow the kids to remain with their teachers. So I do, I do want you to know we are listening, and I do share a lot of your concerns.
All right, next community comment. Is this the last?
All right, this is the last comment. Michelle Rodriguez, 43 Elmwood, Warminster, PA. I wanted to share that a majority of parents are okay with long-term virtual schooling. As we know, the hybrid will bring less direct instruction on the three days off. Please do not try to please the squeaky wheels in our district. It is selfish to demand any form of reopen when cases in our county and now our schools have risen. It now was released that people can and will get COVID more than once. Not good news. We are the silent majority because we are focused on doing what's best for everyone's health and safety. Our kids are thriving. The parents who claim that their kids are not could be just receiving their parents' negative vibes about it and responding accordingly. If they demand in-person schools, there are dozens of charters and religious schools available for them. I speak for every parent when I say that I'm so sorry to witness the bullying towards the district by some very inconsiderate parents. Thank you.
And thank you again for your comment. This hybrid plan attempts to address the concerns that you have raised with respect to the type of virtual education that will be delivered if you elect to keep your children home. You should continue to be much closer to what you are experiencing now, and you have that option to keep the children home, which is, you know, what we're hopefully moving towards eventually is some kind of full reopen with that option, you know, still on the table.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes, Mr. Martin.
Would you, at this point, would you entertain my motion to move item 6.1 up for debate and discussion now rather than have to rehash this again?
I think that's a very good motion unless somebody, I mean, if you have a second, I'd entertain it.
I'll second that.
Second, so the motion is simply to move 6.1, which is approving this plan that we've spent the last three hours discussing, or two hours and 45 minutes, to a vote now so that we can then put this piece of the agenda behind us and deal with the rest. Is there any discussion of the motion to move it up right now? If there's no discussion, Ms. Roble, I guess, well, actually, we're all together. I don't necessarily know that we have to do a roll call vote on this. Or do we? Because we're still, for the people at home, let's do a roll call vote.
It's up to you.
Let's do a roll call. Sure.
On moving up item 6.1?
To right now.
To right now.
So we can vote on it now.
Yes. Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Birdnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Goddixon? Mr. Goddixon?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Okay, 8-1 to move up item 6.1.
So we can now, Mrs. Crossen, can you read 6.1 now then? As, what are we going to call it then?
It doesn't matter. It's new business item 6-1. She can read it as is.
Okay, there we go.
All right. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the administration's request to move to a hybrid reopening and update the district's health and safety plan as per the timeline outlined in the K-12 school hybrid proposal in item 2-2.
I'll second that.
Seconded in by Mr. Panofsky. Is there any further discussion of the plan? Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I want to just point out, Mrs. Reed made a good point. As Mr. Martin read, Dr. Damsker says that the most important thing is following the safety plan. And I don't think the risk is that the district won't follow the safety plan. The risk we have is that the parents won't follow the safety plan. We've made it clear, we've put protections in place, and I am going to support the plan. But that's where we really need to emphasize to our families the level of importance it is that if they want the schools to remain open and move to a full-time plan, they are the ones who must be on the front line and follow the criteria established by the district.
Mrs. Brancato?
So this, basically, this is saying that we agreed to the timeline also? Okay.
I will say that understanding that the timeline is what the target is, but is subject to revision based on conditions on the ground.
I mean, really, really, what I wish could happen isn't going to happen. And that's whoever wants to go back, go back. Whoever doesn't want to go back and they want to stay virtual, then they stay virtual. I do understand having to go a little bit at a time, but I would have liked the timeline to be quicker if everything was okay with the world. But I don't see that. And I do think it could be quicker. And the point I was trying to make about the bus was not that I don't even think there's going to be enough kids for the bus. But the point was, if it's okay for them to sit next to each other on the bus, we could be a little closer in the school than six feet. That was the point I was trying to make. So we just can't have it both ways. I feel, I feel bad for the people, you know, that are struggling and need to go back to work. I absolutely do not agree with your, maybe you didn't mean it to come out that way, but believe me, Andrew, not just low-income people get COVID. And it's not, and they're not going to be the spreaders. And that's the way it came out.
Well, I apologize. I will say that I didn't mean to indicate that people on the lower end of the economic scale are somehow more likely to spread it. It's more that they're more likely to be in conditions, or be in situations where they are more likely to be exposed to it.
But Andrew, that's not true. Listen, you know, rich people go to parties, they hang out with their friends. COVID doesn't really care who you are.
Yeah, but rich people also have access to better healthcare, but we don't have to debate the point. Now, Mr. Goddixon, then Mr. Panofsky.
Okay, here's, here's my point, you know, that is that by using the hybrid model to open up, we will get a picture of how many students are coming in on a daily basis. And I'm sure that if we see less than 16 students between the two cohorts, we might be able to look at a different time schedule. Because then we'll be able to accommodate six feet difference in the classroom, if I understand the plan correctly.
Mr. Panofsky? You were next, right?
Yeah, it doesn't matter. I actually withdraw my question. We're good.
Is there anything else on this before we vote? I'll just say one last time, thank you so much to the administration, administrative staff who worked together and worked so hard on this. Thank you to the parents and the staff who took the surveys. You provided the input that allowed the plan both to be made initially and then revised to what you saw tonight, which I think was presented extremely effectively. And thank you also, most especially to Dr. Bedden for, you know, this is your first time out. This is a hard way to be coming into a district. So I really appreciate all the hard work you put into this. Thank you very much. With that said, Ms. Roble, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Very grudgingly, yes.
Mr. Birdnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato? Yes, no, or abstain?
I was trying to turn it over.
Extending the raw lineup, yes, no, or abstain?
I can't even hear what you just said.
I said your vote, yes, no, or abstain?
Well, I'm trying to answer you.
So what is your vote?
So.
Without a comment, please, we're voting. This is parliamentary procedure. I'm going to ask for your vote. Will you want to not vote then?
My vote is yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, but I don't want anybody else to give a comment either then.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Goddixon?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0-0.
Thank you very much, everyone. We can continue now with the you're muted. Or something.
Oh, I just wanted to let the principals that they can go ahead and leave since you already moved it up. Sit through this, the cabinet remains, but the principals can leave if you don't mind.
Now I see what Mr. Miller was doing. He was currying favor with the principals. I get it.
Never happened.
Thank you guys for all your hard work on this.
And now, Dr. Bedden, it's time for your report. I'm just kidding. We've done the community comment. So consent agenda, Mrs. Crossen, please take it away.
5.1, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.1A approves the minutes from the September 8, 2020 work session, regular school board meeting. 5.1B approves the minutes from the September 22, 2020 committee of the whole meeting. 5.2 personnel, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.2A approves termination, 5.2B approves resignation, 5.2C approves authorization to employ, 5.2D approves leave of absence, 5.2E approves change of status, 5.2F approves co-curricular additions and deletions 2020-2021, 5.2G approves recall from furlough. 5.3 exceptions to policy, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.3A rejects the request for exception to policy 202 eligibility of non-resident student and policy 607 tuition income for students 7-19 and 12-19. 5.3B approves the request for exception to policy 206 assignment within district for student 2-3 to attend Willidell Elementary School instead of McDonald Elementary School for the 2020-2021 school year. Parent will provide transportation. 5.4 appointments, none. 5.5 waivers, none. 5.6 conferences and travel, none. 5.7 bids and quotes, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.7A approves the quote Q21-002 diploma and cover to Hirth Jones. District cost is $6.45 per diploma. 5.7B approves awards cap and gown bid 2021-01 to Oak Hall for the 2020-21, 2021-22, and 2022-23 school years. 5.7C approves a quote from Make Music for the Purchase of License for Smart Music. District cost not to exceed $2,740. 5.8 Assembly Speakers and Programs, none. 5.9 Contracts, Licenses, and Services, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.9A approves the letter of agreement with Hanover Research Council for three-year term. District cost not to exceed $40,000 per year. 5.5.10 Textbooks, none. 5.11 Acceptance of Donations, Grants, and Bequests, none. 5.12 Changes to Academic Programs, Positions, Stipends, none.
Second.
All those, Ms. Roble, let's just do roll call for the sake of completion.
Okay, Mr. Birdnick?
Aye.
Mrs. Brancato? This is just from the five, Patty? This is
Yes.
The consent agenda, items five.
All items under five.
5-1 to 5-12.
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Goddixon?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, on everything except no and 5.9.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Okay, 9-0-0, except 5.9, which is 8-1.
Mrs. Crossen, new business except for 6.1, which we've already done.
And did anybody want to pull anything? Okay. Be it resolved, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 6- six point two approves the memorandum of understanding with Middlebuck's Institute of Technology for Special Education Services as per the attached. Six point three approves the adoption of Pennsylvania School Boards Association Principles of Governments and Leadership as per the attached. Six point four approves the Human Resources Supervisor and Human Resources Clerk job titles and job descriptions as per the attached. Six point five approves a settlement agreement and generally lease for employee, employee two point one.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on any of these items? Going once, going twice, seeing none. Oh, Mr. Godickson?
Yeah, personally, you know, I, I'm very concerned to see that we need a supervisor for the Human Resource Department uh, for a group of four people. In my opinion, that's not necessary.
Um, Dr. Tolkz, this was your organizational, uh, re, you know, office organization that you requested. Can you explain the role of the Human Resources Supervisor and what that title really means?
Yes, sir, I can. Okay. Am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
You're good.
Okay. Yes, actually, that's a, a still a support staff. And it's going to be somebody who's going to be heavily, um.
Uh, you're, 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 you're cutting in and out on my feed, uh, but anybody else?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, maybe try to move your microphone a little bit closer.
Thank you. These things have shifted. Yes, that might have helped a lot. Okay, um, this is still a support staff. Um, everybody who is in the HR department will still report to me. As you have seen tonight, um, HR is taking on a lot more responsibility than just running a Human Resources Department, which in and of itself touches every single employee that we have in our district. On top of that, we have COVID that we're dealing with. I'm doing only with, um, speaking one-on-one with as many employees who need me. I am also dealing with, uh, the new laws that have been created with FFCRA, FMLA, ADA, um, unemployment comp, uh, rate recruiting, screening, employee investigations, benefits, training, background screening, promotions, uh, job descriptions, medical reimbursements, tuition reimbursements, advertising positions, um, workers' comp, onboarding grievances, although we won't have any with the relationship that I have with our union, but also with conflict resolution. And I cannot get all that done in and of myself as much as I'd like to be. Uh, but everybody that I have created these positions for are support and would be a direct report to me. But I need some real expertise in that room if I cannot be available because I'm trying to provide the top stellar services that this, um, body of employees deserves. I can tell you that everybody that I have worked with so far has been extremely gracious and kind and patient, understanding that I don't have the resources necessary. But they shouldn't have to be this gracious, kind and patient. They should have a robust HR department that actually runs so well that we're out thanking them and providing the service before they even ask. And that is the structure that I would like to begin with.
Dr. Tolkz, just to, to, to put, not to put too fine a point on it, but some people seem to be hung up on the word supervisor in that title. Can you explain the exact role of this person? Are they literally supervising people, just watching them work? What is the, what is this job going to entail specifically?
This job, the reason that I put it at a supervisor level, I did look at the entire, um, appendix D of the, um, support staff compensation plan. There is a supervisory position there. One, it's a maintenance supervisor. I do not, so I replicated that based on that because I need somebody to be, that I can bring in that has of knowledge. And I felt that I could, um, attract that. I have had the opportunity since I've been here to advertise multiple positions and to run multiple interviews. So we've been able to get a lay of the land and the talent that we have out there. And I really needed to have a higher level position to gain the talent here. This position will be responsible for all benefits for every employee who chooses to take our benefits. Plus, they will be involved with every HR process, um, and innovation across the spectrum of whatever we need done in HR. But they will report directly to me. They will not have any direct reports.
So in other words, supervisor is not being used in the traditional sense of I'm working with Mrs. Crossen, Mrs. Islandberg, Mr. Martin, Mr. Godickson, and they all report to me and I report to you. That is not the structure you were talking about.
No, sir, they will all report directly to me.
Would it not make more sense to get a, a benefit specialist that would be able to do some human resource work on the side?
I did attempt to find a benefits, um, specialist based on the compensation structure that we have. I had three people who qualified. I did interviews of those three people. Only one of them actually could even perform the duties and they would not come for the money that I, that was proposed. So we were back to square one. So I felt I needed to go back to the drawing board and do a restructure because I'm not going to be able to get the talent in here that our employees serve.
Are there any other questions about this position? Dr. Ben?
So Dr. Tolkz, what it also boils down to is you had to title it to fit in the compensation structure that we have in the district.
Yes, sir.
To get it to market value, to get the skill set.
Yes, sir.
So the title is driven by our compensation structures, what you really just described.
Yes, sir.
Because the first round did not produce any candidates at the other level that was comparable to the pay grade of people labeled in that other, uh.
No, so.
Yes.
I only had three that even met the minimum.
And a benefit specialist would cost us more than this sup, Human Resources Supervisor?
Say that again?
A raw benefit specialist in the, in the gen, in the general sense, like if you went and got somebody who was qualified, essentially it's going to cost us more than what this would be. Based on your one interview and somebody wouldn't take it.
We would not, well, the thing is you would not get the service that you needed. So, yeah, eventually our return on investment would be, um, a huge cost because I don't think we could sustain any kind of performance. And I'm not going to keep people in a position who cannot do the job.
Are there any further questions on this subject? Anything else anybody wants to discuss? Ms. Roble?
Okay, on new business, items six point two to six point five, Mrs. Brancato? Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Godickson?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, except no on six point five.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Birdnik?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon? Okay, we have.
Yes.
Three nos, six, three.
We, you have two nos on six, three and one on six, five, the way I counted.
Correct, yes, correct.
All right. Policies. There are none. That's correct. There is no policies. All right. Uh, financials.
Mr. President, just a comment that we actually will be, uh, getting on the calendar dates to try to start to work on, uh, because we work on that today, the policy updates. Uh, so we did discuss that with, uh, the staff and that will be coming out, uh, to start getting those going again.
Very good. Um, financials, Mr. Birdnik?
Eight point one, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the schedule of bills, investments, cafeteria fund budget reports, and general fund cash receipts summary, September twenty twenty, as per the attached. Eight point two approves the twenty twenty budget transfers for September, as per the attached. Eight point three approves the pending bills list, as per the attached. And eight point four approves the pre-approved paid bills list, as per the attached.
Second. Uh, we have a second for Mr. Miller. Um, any comments, questions on the financials? Going once, going twice, seeing none. Ms. Roble?
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Birdnik?
Can somebody mute?
Yes.
Echo?
Mrs. Brancato?
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Godickson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin? Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon? Nine zero zero.
Yes, for the record, I was muted, for those who didn't hear. Um, thank you, Mr. Birdnik. Uh, we are now to board discussion. Is there any further board discussion this evening? Um, board discussion, is there any board discussion at this stage? Uh, Ms. Roble, yes?
Could I just ask a favor? I know it's late, but, uh, the board approved the, uh, principles of governance put out by PSBA. There's a large poster sitting at the end of the table and individual Sharpies. If you could take five minutes to sign your name, we would appreciate that. Otherwise, I'll try and catch up with people in two weeks.
Yeah, all right, everybody, before you leave, sign the thing. Sign the thing. Um, okay. Um, no other board discussion, then reports, Mrs. Crossen, District Policy Report.
Um, we have none at this time.
Uh, Mrs. Islandberg, BCIU?
Good evening. Uh, I wanted to share two things. Um, first, uh, as some of us know, um, Executive Director Dr. Hoffman's daughter, Madeline, fell ill about thirty days ago and, um, was hospitalized at CHOP, um, was sent home and was re-hospitalized. She is now home. She is doing well. She's on the road to recovery. She does have a long road. Um, but we are sending our support to Dr. Hoffman and his family and the BCIU staff who have been amazing with, uh, keeping the, the, um, the, the unit going in Dr. Hoffman's absence. He is transitioning back to his role uh, little by little, and we should be hearing from him a little bit more. But our, our thoughts and our prayers go out to him and his family and to Madeline for a quick recovery. The, the second item I wanted to share is that, um, it's been quite a long while Dr. Hoffman has been working on extending services beyond the age of eighteen to adult folks that are in need of, uh, aid from the BCIU. The programs being offered are being developed, uh, that will be shared on the BCIU website. Uh, there was an article in the Courier, uh, and I actually had it to read to you, but I left it in the car, so I apologize. Um, but really good news for our, um, our students who have gotten the services from the BCIU and have, uh, gone through and, uh, still require assistance and guidance. And it's great that we have that service now to offer them because we, in the, in, uh, previously what would happen is a student would sort of age out of the services and the parents stand there and go, okay, well, what do I do next? I still need that support. So the BCIU is filling that void and being the rock stars they are, you know? So thank you for that. And that, that concludes my report at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Islandberg. And I know I speak with, for everyone, we're keeping, uh, Dr. Hoffman's daughters in our thoughts. Dr. Hoffman assisted greatly and the IU with our, uh, search for Dr. Ben. So we all got to know him and his team very well. It's a terrible thing, but we're glad to hear that his daughter is, uh, recovering and we hope that that continues. Uh, and, and that she's back completely on her feet and ready to go as soon as possible. Um, the PSBA, uh, liaison is me. I will say that, uh, COVID does not stop the PSBA. They still were able to manage to have their virtual, in this case, advocacy day, their fall advocacy day virtually. Uh, on Thursday, October eighth, uh, there was a Zoom meeting, uh, where, uh, participants were able to discuss, uh, a number of challenges facing all the districts during the pandemic. Uh, the association provided information and talking points, sample letters and other resources on its website for members to use. Uh, and then they spent the day communicating with legislators, their own legislators via Zoom meetings. So a lot got done, given what's going on. And I mean, to Dr. Ben's point, that relationship, uh, that you made much earlier in this meeting, that relationship with legislators is, is key as we're trying to navigate these things. So much depends on funding, you know, um, the more funding we have. I said to a parent in one of my replies this week, i- if we had limitless money, we could be back at school fully doing everything all the time because we could have infinite staff, infinite buses, all that kind of stuff. So, uh, these relationships are important. Uh, the other thing.
Just so you transition, I wanted to communicate to the board that through that advocacy day, I did have three meetings uh, with our, our legislators, three different separate meetings that they were scheduled. So I spent, uh, the good part of that day in, uh, meetings with, uh, our legislative representatives on Zoom sessions with them.
Excellent. And, uh, obviously also the board, you know, has adopted, again, uh, the PSBA, uh, Principles for Good Governance. We all agreed to sign on to this. We're all going to do that. Uh, and that, you know, the PSBA continues to be a great resource for us as a board, uh, to be able to do the job that we do. So it's, uh, it's a, it's a wonderful thing for us to participate in. Uh, with that having been said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Miller for the Legislative Council Liaison update.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Dixon. And as you pointed out, advocacy day was a success. We had a hundred and fifty-one legislator meetings across the state. Uh, unfortunately, we're coming to the end of the General Assembly. Uh, we have several things that we're looking for, as Dr. Ben pointed out earlier, meaningful charter reform. Uh, we're looking for additional funding for several areas, uh, safety being one of them. Uh, we're looking to fight vouchers. Uh, there is a bill bubbling up right now to take half a billion dollars of CARES funding and give it to non-public schools. Uh, we're looking for liability protection, uh, and we're looking for, uh, testing relief. There, there is a, a good bill on the floor right, not making its way toward the floor right now on testing relief. What is holding it up is trying to separate teacher evaluation from a student performance, especially when a fourth grade teacher, for example, may not have had any role to play in that student's learning from kindergarten through third grade. And it's unfair to rate a teacher on a student that was behind when that student entered their class. So, uh, given the hour, I'm going to stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, for that report. Uh, Mr. Godickson, MBIT?
Surely. So the first thing, uh, again, is they will have the open house, as was mentioned, you know, by the MBIT student. It is on November nineteenth. It is primarily for prospective ninth graders, but it is open to everybody. Uh, it will be virtual. Um, so, um, again, it will be online, but for ninth graders, it's, uh, of interest of attending MBIT next year. Uh, also, MBIT, you know, came up with their student, uh, count for October, and they have eight hundred and fifty-four students this year, which is an increase of, uh, two point eight percent, up from eight hundred and thirty-one students. Two hundred and thirty-seven of those students come from Centennial School District, which makes the population at MBIT twenty-eight percent of, uh, the population there from Centennial. And this also represents seventeen point three percent of the high school students attending Tenet High School. Uh, and that is a slight decrease from last year. Ninety-eight students from Centennial will have an IEP and, uh, that is forty-one point four percent of the students that's coming from Centennial. That is slightly less than the, uh, special ed student population at the school, which is forty-two point five percent or a total of three hundred and sixty of the eight hundred and fifty-four students. Uh, the HVAC program is somewhat in trouble at the tech school. Um, it has, uh, was combined with the plumbing program. But there is currently just three seniors in the HVAC program. So it is at risk of being dropped. Um, we also had bids, you know, for two sections of the roof, uh, at the. we also had bids, you know, for two sections of the roof, uh, at the tech school. And there were four bidders out of the five potential bidders. And their fees range from a hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred to three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And lastly, uh, you know, as was mentioned and, and Doc, uh, John Panofsky, um, mentioned, you know, the preschool program uh, has gotten their keystone rating from three stars up to four stars, which is quite prestigious. Um, the school also has more preschoolers attending, uh, the tech school than they had at this time last year. Um, so there's quite an accomplishment, you know, for the, you know, that preschool program at the tech school. That concludes my report.
Uh, Mr. Panofsky or Mr. Miller, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, not really. The only thing that, what, uh, Mr. Goddickson mentioned about this, uh, IEP students and the percentage being high, um, it is forty-two percent across the school. Um, ours is below average, but also of any district that goes to Middlebuck's, we send the highest percentage of our students to Middlebuck's than any of the other schools. So it's, you know, there's some averaging going on there.
All right. Uh, any questions about that report? Other than that, we are on to communications. Does anyone have any communications at this time? Uh, any additional community comments, Nate?
Yes, we have one additional comment. Uh, it is from Renee Ballier, uh, twelve fifty Brennan Dry, Warminster. Thank you. This new plan provides the best options for most students. My concern is having substitute teachers and the impact on the children. Can we give our teachers the same choice our students have in-person versus home-based? Why can't a teacher teach a class at home and we hire an aide to monitor the room? As noted, there is a teacher shortage. This would keep our same great inexperienced teachers while allowing students consistency. Thank you. That concludes community comments.
Dr. Ben.
Uh, right now, we, all of instructional aides are serving students. There is also instructional aide, uh, shortage going on. Instructional aides also have to have certain credentials. So it's not just the aide that some people think, that, that there's a, a criteria that they go through. And, uh, again, uh, us along with neighboring districts through our superintendent's meeting are all also having a shortage of, uh, aides that are available. And right now, all of our aides that we have employed are dedicated to our special ed program. So if we redeploy them, then we will create another problem, um, in, in the situation. Uh, all I can say to board is that we are to the point of what they just mentioned. If we have a teacher out or a, uh, substitute issue, uh, we are, uh, looking HR at the list of people who, um, have qualifications that we could probably redeploy, uh, if possible. But we can't just make someone an aide. There, there is a credentialing process that goes with it. Yeah, I'm doing this from memory, uh, correct, Ms. Bolden and Dr. Tokes? So, good idea, but it's not as easy as people think. Uh, we are a heavily regulated industry.
Yeah. Um, all right. So the schedule of board meetings and the calendar of events, Mr. Miller.
Monday, October nineteenth, to our delay, all students for in-service. Tuesday, October twentieth, Bucks County Intermediate Unit Board Meeting at Bucks County Intermediate Unit. Tuesday, October twenty seventh, seven PM, Committee of the Whole Meeting here in this room. Tuesday, November third, all schools are closed for an in-service day. Monday, November ninth, uh, five thirty PM, MBIT Executive Council at MBIT. Tuesday, November tenth, seven PM, Centennial School District Board Meeting, or a regular session here in this room. And Friday, November thirteenth, early dismissal, half-day for students, half-day in-service.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Is there anything else going once, twice? I gotta get out of here myself, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, meeting adjourned.